The time is 5:31 PM. I would like to officially call our public hearing to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Our sole order of committee business for this public hearing lies with the Building and Housing Committee. It's Bill One of two thousand and twenty-four. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Chair Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. Mr. Truesdale, could you read the Bill into record, please?
Bill One, two thousand and twenty-four. In ordinance amending the City of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designation of two oh eight Hummel Street from the residential medium density zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to Chapter Seven, three oh three of the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you.
Ms. Davis, as this is an official hearing, people will notice there's a court reporter present to your immediate right. The witnesses will be under oath and there'll be a formal record made of the proceeding. This is a zoning map amendment. I think in ten years, this is the second time we've done one that's on an individual application. Maybe Jeff has better memory than me. But this is under Section seven dash three oh three point fifteen of this Harrisburg zoning code. And it's a proceeding authorized under the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Code. The applicant here is Brethren Housing. And the order of events tonight is I wanted to open with moving into evidence. Five exhibits. I've provided those packages to each of the council members and the city clerk. I'm going to pass one down to Mr. Georgioune so that they have them. These are the same type of documents you normally see with a land development plan. They are, the actual application is item number one from the, from Brethren Housing, a case report from our planning bureau, a comments sent by Dolphin County Planning Commission, which required to request, the resolution of the Harrisburg Planning Commission, an extension letter in agreement from the applicant, and then the city's proof of publication of this hearing in accordance with the law. And I would, I would move that those be admitted into evidence for the proceeding.
Thank you.
I need you to rule on that.
Okay, I'd like to rule that the evidence for exhibit, the exhibit list for Bill One dash two thousand and twenty-four be read into, as evidence into record.
It's just admit it is what we're doing.
Admit it to record.
We will not read every document to you.
Okay.
We will save everyone that. Instead, we're going to call Jeff Knight as our witness, who's going to give an overview of this process as the planning director.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Mr. Knight.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Knight, would you please present?
I have, I believe I have to be sworn in by the court reporter.
Okay.
I do.
Now, Mr. Knight, please.
So as Mr. Grover informed counsel, what you're reviewing tonight is a zoning map amendment. It's a fairly rare application that comes before city council. I believe in the approximately decade we've had this zoning code. We've probably seen, I think this might be the third that's come before council. And so it's obviously, you know, not something that's a first order of business when an applicant wants to do something with their property. It's usually a step, I would say, beyond what like a zoning relief application would be. And in fact, you know, if we would get a request, we'd usually recommend, for something like this, we'd usually recommend that an applicant go to seek zoning relief first, prior to taking the step of amending the zoning map. In this case, the applicant did do that. The applicant did submit a variance application to establish an office use on the, at the subject property at two oh eight Hummel Street. The property is located in the residential medium density zoning district, which does not permit an office use by right. Prior to the applicant's ownership, the, it had been operating as, I believe, a two-unit multifamily dwelling. So it hadn't been in, used in conformance with the zoning code, but it had been vacant for over a year. And so the applicants had submitted a variance application to, to utilize the, the property as an office space. The zoning hearing board did deny their application. And in their review of the application, they recommended that the applicant submit a zoning map amendment and go before city council. In this case, the applicants are requesting that the zoning designation of the property be changed from a residential medium density zoning district to a commercial neighborhood zoning district. Now, when you're looking at zoning map amendments, we really try and be careful that new zoning designations are not contrary to the character of the neighborhood, that they would not introduce the possibility of some out of character use or, you know, adverse use being introduced to a community. In this case, the parcels directly to the north of the subject property are all in the commercial neighborhood district. So there is a corridor just to the north along Mulberry Street. And so, and the, and the commercial neighborhood district is generally designed to provide uses that are compatible with kind of the medium density neighborhoods that characterize this subject property. And so the, you know, current proposal is going to change from a residential medium density to a commercial neighborhood, which reflects the zoning of the properties to the north. You know, one of the other considerations in something like this is we don't want somebody to use the zoning map amendment process as a way to maybe circumvent the zoning code. But in this case, the applicant themselves, it has been a long-term tenant of the neighborhood. I believe they've been in the community for about thirty years. They're currently located in the basement of the First Church of the Brethren, just across the street and at the other end of the block on Hummel Street. So this is not the case of a property owner coming in, looking to, to change the zoning designation so that they have more options to lease the space to whomever into the future. It's the case of where a long-term organization in the community that helps the immediate community is looking to expand their operations, which help those who are trying to escape domestic violence, women and single mothers to get back on their feet. Many of those individuals live in the immediate neighborhood, which has properties that are owned, I believe, by the applicant or possibly by the church. So it's really imperative that they be located, you know, proximate to all of those residents so that they're able to easily provide these services. It's not something where you can just tell them to move maybe blocks away. And so for that reason, the planning bureau did recommend support of this proposal. And then at their meeting, the planning commission also recommended support of the proposal. The support was not conditioned, so it was just a straight approval recommendation. And the planning commission did recommend that Harrisburg City Council approve the request for the following reasons. The subject property is adjacent to properties in a corridor located in the commercial neighborhood zoning district, meaning that uses permitted by the new zoning district would not be contrary to the character of the neighborhood and would include those which could otherwise be established in adjacent properties. The applicant has sought approval to establish the proposed use via the zoning relief process and was denied by the zoning hearing board, which recommended that the applicant pursue the current application. Thus, they have pursued alternative means of securing the relief necessary to establish the proposed use. The proposed rezoning would allow the applicant to occupy the subject property, expanding their ability to continue providing housing and programming to the surrounding community at a time when such services are in increasing demand. And the applicant's organization has existed in the community for over thirty years and its focus is on the immediate neighborhood. Thus, it is reasonable to assume that they will occupy the site for the foreseeable future and will not likely, not be likely to vacate the property to establish a use which would otherwise not be permitted by the existing RM zoning designation. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions from the council members about either the process or the planning bureaus or planning commission's recommendation.
Does anyone have any questions? Any council members have any questions for Mr. Knight? Okay.
Here in my, I would ask that the applicant is here with their council, whether their council has any questions for the city.
No questions.
No questions, okay.
With that, the city's portion of the case is done. The applicant is going to put on their, their own testimony about, about their application, why they're doing what they're doing and what their request to the council is.
Okay, well, this hearing is hereby.
Madam Chair, I do have a quick question, my apologies. Thank you all for joining us this evening. I noticed the property on two nineteen Hummel listed. What is the significance in that, in that property? Whomever would like to answer.
That's our current headquarters. We're located in the basement of First Church of the Brethren at two nineteen Hummel.
So that's right on the corner of the church, the big church?
Correct.
And then two oh eight is right across the street, right?
It is, it's diagonal to the right.
And majority of the commercial space that we're looking, well, the residential currently that we're looking to make commercial, there is a lot of residents in the area. How would that affect them either positively or negatively?
So we own the entire block of Hummel Street right there. We have twenty-four units that we provide transitional housing for single mothers and fathers experiencing homelessness. That building is a standalone unit. That's a little too large to remediate into what anyone could use for a single family home. And so our hope is to convert that to additional case management space to use that for trauma-informed counseling for our participants. And so I do not envision any of the residents being impacted in any way other than that we're able to provide wonderful services in their community.
Okay, and then, so I noticed like Mulder Square is involved, properties on Dairy. Are those all in future, having future intentions of having services in that, those areas as well?
We do have two units on Mulberry Street as well. Two properties that we own, that once you turn off Hummel and up Mulberry, we own two of those properties as well.
Awesome, all for the same purpose, serve the same?
All transitional housing.
Okay, thank you. No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Any other council members have any questions? Okay. So at this. Yes, does the applicant, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, we do, we do have a presentation, so my client should be sworn in. Thank you, I'm Andrew Georgioune with One Law. So Kate, if you can introduce yourself really quick.
Sure, my name is Kate Gillis Hannah. I'm Executive Director for Brethren Housing Association.
Councilman Rodriguez asked, answered, asked you some questions earlier, which you weren't under oath, but can you confirm that they were true and correct?
Yes, they were.
Thank you. So just tell us a little bit, if you would, about what Brethren Housing does and how many people they serve.
In two thousand and twenty-three, our fiscal year, we served over one hundred and forty individuals. Over eighty of them are children. We serve single parents experiencing homelessness. They stay with us anywhere from six months to a year while they work on removing housing barriers and getting back on their feet. We welcomed our first single father successfully through the program this year, which is really exciting for us. And so while they're with us, they are participating in life skills courses. They are looking for employment, they are securing childcare. And our office is right there at two nineteen Hummel Street, all of our properties surround it. Our participants come into our office throughout the day. There is computer space, they come in and do job training, job employment search. And so it's critical for us to be on the block as that presence for them. For anything they, I drove one of my participants to school two days ago. So it's, it's critical for us to be there. And so we're outgrowing our current space in the church basement. We're going to maintain that, but we are outgrowing that, which is a good thing. We have twenty-four units now in our, in our transitional housing portfolio.
And I have a list of the properties, I believe I attached it to, to our appeal that identifies those. And one of those properties identified is two A and Hummel, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and you purchased that in March of two thousand and twenty-one?
That's correct.
Okay, and that property is twenty-one hundred and eighty-seven square feet. And that's larger than the properties in that neighborhood, correct?
Yes, I believe so.
And what else is different about it in terms of the rest of the properties in the neighborhood?
So it's a standalone building. There is a driveway with a five bay garage in the back of it with the yard as well that we will hopefully be able to utilize for storage of furniture and, and things like that for our families. But it, it's differentiated that way.
Okay, and, and what was the intent of purchasing it?
The hope is to create a community space, a counseling space, case management space for our participants and employees.
And, and office space for your employees, correct?
Office space, yes.
And parking, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So in June two thousand and twenty-three, you filed a variance, correct?
That's correct.
And that was denied in July?
That's correct.
Okay, and you filed an appeal.
Yes.
Shortly after, and then you filed this request to essentially change the map and rezone the property, correct?
That's correct.
Counsel, you all have in your packets this neighborhood map. I just would ask you to focus on it quickly. And so on that map, which is in your packet, there's an X on the property. So Kate, can you confirm that's your property right there?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so in that map, the, the yellow is the, the commercial neighborhood zone and then the residential medium zone is the red. So you would be converting this from the residential to the commercial. That's the major of all of them. And so our application was heard by the planning commission on November first, is that correct?
Yes.
And the approval was unanimous, correct?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions.
And Madam Chair, the only thing I would add is the, is the zoning board and the applicant agreed to stay, the appeal over in the county court in the hope that this would resolve the question for everybody. And once that, if the council approves this, that case will be by stipulation closed out and then it will be over.
Okay, do we have anyone else that needs to, wants to make a comment or?
You should offer the public a chance if, if they have any comments on the particular hearing application.
Does any members here from the public have any comments that you would like to make? Anyone to the right, to the middle here or to the left? Okay, so then this will.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, counsel.
I'm sorry, I just had one quick question or more so clarification. I know you said you provide services to single family mothers or even fathers. Do you also provide services for residents who are unhoused and don't have children?
No, we do not. Everyone must have a family unit with them.
Okay, thank you, I was just wondering for your program. And oh, wait, one more question. On the sheet, right now, I believe the property is yellow, but are you just showing us that to say this is how you want to convert it to be in the business district and not the housing? But originally it's, it's red?
That's right.
Okay.
So it's yellow now, it will convert to red. So that just shows you that there's a lot of commercial neighborhood zoning in that area and we're not asking for anything radical in departure from, from the neighborhood.
All right, I'm sorry.
And if you approve the bill, what happens is the, the city then converts the map as, because that's what you're voting on, is an update of the map.
Right, I understood that part. It was just, when you said the colors, I thought you might have said it backwards, so I thought. So I was like, wait a minute. So I wanted to just make sure, but I got, I do understand, thank you.
Okay, for clarity, so the residential portion is being converted. You would like it to be converted to the commercial, is that correct?
Yeah, commercial neighborhood, which allows an expanded kind of office use.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, my question was geared towards unhoused as well. Just wanted to see if it was something you guys were interested in getting involved in or joining maybe the Coalition of Homelessness. It's, it's an urgent need of our area, but I do understand you guys stayed aligned with your mission, but.
We, we are very involved with CACH.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. No further questions.
And I'm very familiar with this program. I have friends who have utilized the program twenty, twenty years ago. So I know how valuable the program is in the community and the services that it offers to the participants. So if there aren't any other questions? Would you like to have a question, Councilwoman?
Yes, and I apologize because I'm a little bit late, so some of this might be duplicative. So what were the notification to neighboring properties? Were all of those met?
Sorry, I didn't hear the question.
Oh, the notification to the neighbor, neighboring properties that will be affected by the zoning change.
Yes, I believe the notification requirements were met.
Okay, yes. Okay, and were there any issues related to kind of neighboring properties being impacted by the shift? Like what did you all hear back?
No, we didn't hear anything.
I would just note that the proposed zoning map amendment will change the property from residential medium density to commercial neighborhood, which is the same zoning designation as the properties along Mulberry Street directly to the north.
And so there, there were no objections, there were no complaints? No, okay. That's it for me, thank you.
Do I have another one? Please come to the mic. I can see you over there.
Hello, my name's Claude Phipps. I'm the chairman of the zoning board. Okay, I think they remember me. I think initially we denied this request because the area was so residential media density. And I, and if I remember it, you wanted to put office space in along with resident, along with housing inside the same building.
Just office space.
Just office space. I guess, again, I'm going to ask the planning director, this is the only way they could satisfy that request to basically convert that property?
Well, the other alternative would have been the zoning hearing board approval of a variance request, but that was denied. So this is the only practical alternative for the applicants.
Thank you. Okay, I'll raise it up everywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Phipps. Does anyone else have any questions or would like to make a comment? Okay, well, this closes the hearing for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the reading, the meeting record, excuse me, the time is five fifty-four PM. Thank you, everyone. We're going to move forward with our work session. The time is still five fifty-four PM. I would like to call the work session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels.
Here.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Ms. Davis. Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. We, this evening, you'll hear from a number of committees regarding committee business. We will begin with our Budget and Finance Committee. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. The first piece of business for the Budget and Finance Committee will be Resolution Twelve of two thousand and twenty-four, which is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional service agreement with Meyer Dusel PC for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Brian McCutcheon will give a brief summary of the services they, they have provided for us for multiple years, but this is on, before you for consideration.
Thank you, Marita. Good evening, council members. Brian McCutcheon, accounting manager. Thank you, President Bowers and Vice President Green. For this particular resolution, it involves the firm of Meyer Dusel to provide audit preparation assistance services for the twenty-two, twenty twenty-two financial audit, which is currently ongoing with the city's independent auditors, Boyer and Ritter. The main, the main areas that they assist us with, which, which is needed as well for the, the twenty twenty-two audit, includes the sanitation utility system, analysis of refuse and disposal, receivables and, and revenue. That mainly represents the Neighborhood Services Fund. The city's accrued compensation, absent, accrued compensation, absenceness liability, which pertains to employee leave balances at year end. Also, the OPEB, that's Other Post-Employment Benefits Actuarial Liability. There's an allocation that is done for the, the uniform, the, the police, the fire and the non-uniform portions of that liability. And also, the other major area includes the city's pension expense work papers, including net asset, net liability, deferred inflows and outflows. Those are financial positions on the pension side for the city's balance sheet. They've provided these services in, in several recent years, so they have a good understanding. And of course, they have their prior year work papers to fall upon for comparative analysis and supporting documentation. That's the quick summary of that.
All right, thank you very much. And so just a couple of questions, to be clear, this is only for the two thousand and twenty-two year?
That's correct.
And the amount is not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars, correct?
Yes, as, as described in their proposed engagement letter.
All right. At the moment, I don't have any further questions. I'm going to open up to my colleagues for any questions. I'm going to start to my far left with Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Kelly and the rest of the team for joining us. Just a quick question, and I know they've done work with you guys previously. How did you, once again, decide to go with this particular firm?
Mainly the historical knowledge that they have to help us not just complete the audit, but to expedite it along with, with their knowledge. And the give and take relationship the Bureau of Financial Management has with, with this particular firm.
Awesome, thank you for that, no further questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Good evening to you all, thank you for being here, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, President Bowers.
Thank you, good evening, I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilwoman Green, and thank you for being here this evening. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Daniels.
This is a question I posted, and I haven't received a memo from you. Should Councilwoman Green be overseeing budgetary resolutions?
I've answered that question, and I know of no basis why that should not happen in the law or in your rules or in the code.
It would be nice to have a memo.
No, I am just not going to do that. I mean, it is not a legal basis, you know it's not a legal basis, and I'm not going to do it.
There is a serious conflict of interest.
There is no such thing. There is no such thing.
When someone is being investigated, Ms. Green can recuse herself, she can disclose, she can ask another person on the committee to... There are many options here, and you need to actually give us legal advice on how to proceed.
I already gave you legal advice.
Objection, objection. I think this could be discussed in an executive session, please. Object. If we can please discuss this in an executive session, that would be great.
It's my understanding that this topic, it does not warrant an executive session, so that's why we have not had one.
Understood. Thank you.
That's the only question.
No further questions? Well, thank you. I appreciate your concern. I don't think that it relates to this topic, or I really warrant much of a discussion at this moment, but I do appreciate your concern. I do have another question. As far as this resolution, where does this put us for our audits? Will it like help us to catch up on being done with audits and being on time?
Yes, that's the overall goal, to move this 22 audit into its completion before the mid-year. And then we would just keep moving right along by going into the financial audit for 2023.
So for clarity, it is already not on time. This is a catch-up that the city is doing, and the goal is to having 2023 in for the fall where it normally would fall. But it's a lot to do with the computer transition that we've been in.
Thank you very much. Any further questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, and we will move on to the next piece of business, which is Resolution 13 of 2024. Resolution 13 of 2024 is a resolution approving the first proposed 2024 budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of certain 2023 budget year encumbered commitments and to affirm certain 2023 capital project appropriations.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair and Madam President. We will have two individuals presenting this evening. The Budget Manager will be presenting at the beginning. The Accounting Manager will be presenting the roll forward of the prior year encumbrances. And then I believe the Budget Manager is back to finalize. He's sort of, Brian's sort of sandwich in between. We appreciate your patience, and I think they'll do a fine job of explaining. Thanks. Tim, do you want to start?
Good evening, Council. I'm Timothy Brooks, the Budget Manager, and I'm going to go over the City of Harrisburg's first proposed 2024 budget adjustment slash reallocation. There is five exhibits in the reallocation, A through B, and I'll start off with Exhibit A. Brian McCutcheon, Accounting Manager, will clarify things from Exhibits B through D, and then I'll finalize Exhibit E of the reallocation. And Exhibit A, which is what we have up there in front of you, occurs within the State Liquid Fuels Fund, and ultimately, this is a no-cost transfer. It's not going to cost us no money. Essentially, the money that was appropriated for the State Liquid Fuels Fund has been appropriated, and it's in the right fund, however. The wrong amount is in the wrong, is in the wrong account. So Streets and Roads, which is where we utilize for paving needs and things for public works, they utilize that line for those paving needs, and currently, there's not enough money for the paving money, for the paving needs on that line. Essentially, the money was put on the concrete line in an amount of $319,397, and we need to move it over to the Streets and Roads line so they can charge those expenditures to that line and be appropriate through the accounting process when they do so. Essentially, that's really, that's all that's happening. The reason for us coming here today is because we have a $20,000 threshold in which whenever we have to transfer such amounts of money beyond $20,000, we need to bring it in front of council. Other than that, that is essentially what's happening within this exhibit of the reallocation, and I'm open to any questions.
Any questions regarding this?
Just to be clear, on those two lines from the concrete line with the $319, $397, all we're doing is actually just moving that. This is already allocated for the Streets and Roads, and you're just flipping around.
Yes, correct.
Got you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you.
All right, now, we have separate spreadsheets, so we're going to jump over to spreadsheet for Streets, I mean, for B and C. And I will turn it over to Mr. McCutcheon.
All right, thank you, Tim. So the schedule, starting with Exhibit B, and this is the most extensive one. It's the largest amount of data on here. And Jared distributed the handouts that you just received. And Tim just went through the first page. What we're looking at right here for Exhibit B is two pages. This, in a nutshell, represents the city's roll forward of prior year encumbrances still open as of December 31 of last year, meaning that we, the city has commitments on purchase order or contract encumbrances that just were not paid, for whatever reason, by the end of last year. And through the Purchasing Office and through communications with the involved departments, we've determined that these amounts are what need to be rolled forward into 2024 because there's a strong anticipation now that they will exactly, they will be paid, in fact. The city always has this overview every year. There's always outstanding encumbrances open at the end of the year. We do a review, and we determine which ones need to be rolled into the subsequent year. But with the timing of the budget in November and December, we just don't know which ones are going to actually be paid or not be paid prior to the approval of the budget for the new year. So there's that, there's that gap, if you will, of just not knowing. So that's why we bring this before you tonight as the roll forward and ask that the budget be adjusted upward for these particular lines to accommodate these encumbrances, which we believe have a strong chance of being actually dispersed in fiscal year 2024. That's a quick summary. On the detailed level, if you look at the schedule, the first top part of this, it's primarily the general fund. The total roll forward is $3.3 million involving all these indicated lines. The four main things stand out, which are really two-thirds or $2 million of that total, including the ERP system upgrade through Tyler Technologies. That is $267,000. The Fire Bureau had a upgrade in its radio fleet through Motorola. That's very significant. That's just short of $1 million alone. Also, for Broad Street Market, there is a tent lease in effect, as you're aware. That is roughly $184,000. And the last material item, which is $567,000 plus, involves the current ongoing renovation of the Public Safety Building with a particular general contractor. So that's the general fund. The next fund, the funds are listed here. They are in fund order, including the next State Liquid Fuels. That's mainly Streets and Roads, roll forwards that need to happen. Moving down to Fund 25, the Neighborhood Services Fund, there's two main items there that involve our sanitation equipment. There are rear loaders that are encumbered for payment this year, and this is, of course, overseen by Public Works. And also, a mid-mount boom mower, which is a significant piece of equipment. So for Neighborhood Services, we're requesting a roll forward of approximately $640,000 in that particular fund. The next, there's two more funds on the roll forward, including the Police Protection Fund for Academy Training involving the police cadets. And at the bottom finally is the Capital Projects Fund, which includes Streets and Roads related for construction inspection management for both State Street and Second Street. I'll stop right there for any comments or questions.
Any questions regarding this?
I did have one, and I was trying to find exactly where I saw it, but I had thought, too, for fire, the Motorola Solutions, these are walkie-talkies, right? I thought we had already paid that or dispersed those monies for it during the budget season. I could be wrong.
You voted to approve it out of the ARPA money. And just they haven't come in, and therefore, that money is being rolled forward to still pay for the order.
Okay, so then once the ARPA money then will replenish what?
No, this will be. The ARPA money, you voted to move that in to pay this.
And so you, okay.
But it hasn't been spent, that money for this project, because they just haven't come in yet. So it's basically what you've already voted to approve, but it expired December 31st, unless you roll it forward, which is what the request is here.
Yes, I just need that clarified. Thank you.
Correct, yeah. We transferred the ARPA funds into the general fund last year to, again, we were anticipating payment by the end of the year, which did not happen. So that's why this purchase order is still open.
You know, you hear duplicates, you're just, or you hear a couple of times, like, I thought we paid that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Once again, thank you for joining us. My question's similar, but concerning NW Financial and Dowood Engineering. Because they were they were recently in front of us, and they said that last allocation they were requesting, they would be all caught up. So that's the same thing, that this just, it was allocated, but it wasn't rolled over yet, it wasn't...
It hadn't been, they haven't been paid yet. A lot of times, billing lags from the contract when it's awarded. So this is what's left unspent under the contract.
Okay, but the same money that was already allocated. Got you. All right, thank you.
And we do anticipate those to be expended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move to the next schedule.
Okay, very good. Exhibit C. Can take a breath here. This one is not as nearly as complicated, but it's significant. There's three main things here. The top one involves the Harrisburg Senators Fund, which relates to the initiative of doing the stadium, the FNB Field Stadium Upgrade Project. Again, a year-end thing. We, there was budget made available for anticipated expenditures in '23, which did not occur. So there is now, that need from '23 jumps into current year '24. So we're moving, bringing into budget the funds that were not appropriated last year, but we anticipate will certainly need to be as we go throughout this year. So that's the effect of the increase, with now $9.5 million anticipated for 2024 as that project really starts to move. The midsection is Neighborhood Services, with Public Works expressing the need to make progress on the Dome Storage Facility project. And the funding there is to be brought over from the general fund, as they are aware, and finding the appropriateness of the PennDOT right-of-way payments that occurred last year. And the funding that the city received was more than enough to accommodate this $300,000 budget adjustment request. The next, and that involves two funds. I said Neighborhood Services, but the idea there is to transfer what's still sitting in the general fund to bring it into Neighborhood Services on the 300K. The bottom piece is the Broad Street Market again. This reflects the insurance proceeds that were received in 2023, which really were over $4.9 million in total. And we've, there were some payments that did happen already in the latter stages of last year. But again, the, an expressed need has been brought forth that there will be significantly more expenditures for 2024. So again, we're asking an appropriation of this cash that is available as of the end of last year for use in 2024 to help remedy the status of the market. Just those three items on this schedule.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam Chair, can I speak to Exhibit C? Just because it's the first time you've ever had one of these, it's not really a cash carryforward because it wasn't in the budget in the traditional sense. But they were the major project items that the council had approved for these very expenditures. The city's ordinances, their codebook, does not really have a good structure for capital projects. We were having that discussion today with the mayor about whether in the first half of this year an ordinance is needed to better spell out when there's a capital project, how you fund it year over year. Because under state law that we have from 1957, we are stuck in the cash annual budget season. I mean, but which capital projects cannot happen in one cash budget year. So it's here in anticipation that there's going to be a new ordinance coming, and that it is exactly what the council had voted on previously to allow. But I just wanted to point out, it's the first time that kind of request has been made to the council.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we can move on to the next schedule.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Neil, for that extra clarity. Exhibit D involves the general fund and the Harrisburg Redevelopment Authority, which is still a component unit of the City of Harrisburg. And the city last year actually had in its '23 budget an appropriation for HRA, and we subsequently increased it in the latter part of the year to help fund the operations of the authority. So this is, again, another item that is, the input we've received is there is still a need to provide funding to support that, that component unit. And the $435,000 request relates to their budget that they've, that presented and has been reviewed at the executive level. It's roughly 83% of HRA's total revenue, so it is certainly a significant amount. It wasn't worked out in time for the proposed 2024 budget due to there was just too much uncertainty about how much the amount would be needed based on they hadn't fine-tuned or worked out what their revenue, their sources of revenue would be going into this year. So this has now been arrived at for '24, and again, the request is to provide this funding to HRA.
Thank you very much. I know I did have a conversation with some of the members from HRA, and they did go over a plan to revamp their structure to kind of cut their costs because I believe their annual operating cost was closer to $720,000, and they were able to significantly reduce their costs through some restructuring. President Bowers was there in the meeting as well. So I don't know if other councilmembers were able to get access to that budget until it would. If not, I'll make sure that you guys have access to it because they did show a lot of fidelity in decreasing their budget and finding ways to be a little tighter with how they were operating so that the cost that they were asking us to subsidize wasn't as high. So thank you. I don't have any other comments. Anyone else have any comments or questions regarding this schedule?
There, sorry.
Please, please.
There, I just thought, there is some interplay, too, with how there's a somewhat of a benefit relative to the city's guarantee of HRA's debt on the series of 1998 bonds. You've commonly probably heard those referred to as the Verizon Bonds or the Commonwealth Tower Bonds. So their, HRA holds an account which accommodates a significant piece of the revenue that comes in to help fund those maturities that occur. And the city has a piece of that funding to help fund the debt service for the current year. So there, it's, there still is a relationship on that end as we move forward with reducing that liability.
Thank you. If there are no questions, we can move to the next schedule. If there are no questions, we can move to the next schedule.
I'm dried out, so I'll hand this one off to Tim.
My apologies here. We'll move along here to Exhibit E. Ultimately, what's happening here is um, within the general fund and the Department of Fire or Fire Bureau. Um, we're we're appropriating funds for them to maintain their own uh, utility bills. Uh, this. The total amount came to thirty-nine thousand two hundred dollars. Um, and what what it, what what's gonna happen is we're use some of the revenue that we've. Excess revenue to be able to take care of the. Take care of the correction of not appropriating the funds to their utility bill lines. Um, it was a miscommunication within the budget process that caused this. Therefore, uh, we had to, we we're now here having to appropriate the. Amount needed for their annual utility bills within this reallocation.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments regarding this schedule?
Yes, Madam Chair, just for clarity, so. And I could be remedial in repeating it this way, but I just have to get a better understanding. There was departments that utility bills were supposed to be paid, but they weren't paid? Overall?
Well, the idea was to centralize utility bill payments.
Totally get the idea.
Yes.
But reality?
Um, there was a miscommunication within the process that led to.
Bills not being paid?
No, the bills were paid. They just, the the money wasn't appropriated to fires for for them. For them to uh, take care of it on their own.
To be paid. They're just, they're pending bills to be paid.
So they have not been paid?
But they're not overdue. They're they're due at this time and that's why we're coming to you to get those um, brought up to speak, brought up to to date.
Wouldn't we have previously already approved the bills to be paid though?
If I can, I think the clarity is this, when they did the centralization, they didn't account for all departments. Prior years' utility expenses, so something that fire got missed.
Gotcha.
And being added into the total for the year.
Okay.
So Public Works has the lion's share and didn't get the additional funds in their budget.
Gotcha. Okay, understood. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, um, I think that covers all of this. Uh, do you guys want to add anything?
We're just grateful for you um, to uh, be patient and listen to this kind of complicated um, piece of information, but valuable.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here tonight. I appreciate you putting the work in to making sure everything's lined up, um. And giving it to us in a package is pretty easily understandable. So I appreciate the work you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will ask that both Resolution twelve of twenty twenty-four and Resolution thirteen of twenty twenty-four. Be moved to our next legislative agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next committee business will be from the Building and Housing Committee. I will defer to our Building and Housing Committee Chair, Chair Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. Building and Housing Committee Director Denise Hill is here to present. The quarterly d- report for the Department of Building and Housing. You may begin at any time. Director Hill.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'll just yell. Is this better?
You can use that one if you wouldn't mind. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Denise Hill, Director of Department of Building and Housing Development. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you going first? Or you want to just jump in?
Go right ahead.
Perfect. Alright, this is the DBHD Quarterly Report for Q four twenty twenty-three. Uh, here you'll see the description. This is the mission of DBHD. As it uh, shows on the Harrisburg PA dot gov website. Um, just a brief overview, there are six main pots of funding. Out of DBHD, it's Community Development Block Grant, Emergency Solutions Grant, Home Development. The Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration, uh, Home ARP. And the American Rescue Plan Act, there have been a couple of programs that have been assigned to uh. Housing and Economic Development. Events, achievements, and changes. I'm just to kind of highlight what has gone on in Q four of twenty twenty-three. A new CDVG ESG Program Manager came on board. She started in October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, there were some ARPA program application revisions based on a lot of uh, meetings that were had. Nothing has gone live yet, but just continuing to work through that process and then uh, policies. Of how the programs would potentially be run would still come before you all, uh, come before this body. Um, Home Development Workshop, I am happy to report. That a workshop occurred in November of twenty twenty-three, and that was the first home development workshop that has occurred since about twenty nineteen. Next, two hundred and seventeen of two hundred and thirty lead hazard reduction demonstration homes were completed. Um, for those who don't know, the the lead grant is a three and a half year grant cycle. And the target was two hundred and thirty homes to be completed. Where my team goes in and uh, identifies any home in the city that was built before nineteen seventy-eight. If there is lead present and if there is a child in the home under the age of six or a pregnant woman. Or a child who visits for at least sixty hours in one year's time. If there is lead present, we will go in, test. Remediate, mitigate, or remove the lead. Uh, we relocate the family during this time. We test again. Once it passes and clears. The family can move back in. That is no charge to the family and that is um, eligible to renters and homeowners. Within Harrisburg City limits. Um, so again, this has been three and a half years. We did successfully uh, get a, an extension because of COVID. Uh, they HUD gave extensions to everyone who requested, so we were able to successfully get that. So the new deadline. For the two hundred and thirty homes is now July of twenty twenty-four. Um, in my next quarterly report, I will report that we hit that because we just recently uh, did our two hundred and thirtieth home. So I'm very, very proud of that. We also participated in National Lead Prevention Week. Uh, there was news coverage about that. And then overall, there were fourteen members who were on boarded to DBHD. So one was an internal department transfer to a different position and then three. New team member, two, three team members came from other city departments. Uh, progress towards annual goals. Some things that I just wanted to hit and highlight, uh, Governor Square remains uh. An initiative and a priority. Um, as you know, there's about two hundred and twenty-two residential units. And just wanted to make sure that the participation of DBHD is still at the forefront of the proceedings as that moves forward. And um, just cannot uh, overstate the need for affordable units in the city, particularly in that area. Um, and making sure that residents have access to affordable units and not necessarily just. Um, low to moderate income in like with a section eight voucher that we normally think, I'm talking fair market rent. But units that are still affordable to the residents who live here in the city. Um, the Capital Area Coalition on Homelessness and the Winter Overnight Shelter, that continues to run so between December first. And March thirty-first, it is open seven days a week. There are approximately one hundred beds available to unsheltered residents. In the city. Uh, they remain at capacity every night. Um, so the capacity runs, there are three locations, Grace United Methodist Church, they have about thirty. Susquehanna Harbor Safe Haven has about thirty beds, and then Downtown Daily Bread has about thirty-five beds. None of them have been able to only have those numbers. So they are actually finding different rooms. Conference rooms, offices where they are continuing to take in residents over and above the capacity that they actually have. And then lastly, you'll see here the Program Year twenty twenty-two caper. Uh, we held the public hearing and the submission was successfully made to HUD. I just wanted to make sure that we highlighted this because timely and accurate submissions. Lead to no findings, no monitoring, and continued assistance to city residents. This slide here, you will see, um, I'll, I'll hold here for a second. Um, but just wanted to bring your attention to a couple of things. The first four columns, starting from the left to the right. Um, that is money that is earmarked, not necessarily spent. Um, except for uh, there are some admin, there are some professional services, technical assistants. So. You will see down at the amount remaining, those numbers there. But I just wanted to be very, very clear. That those numbers reflect what is um, encumbered or earmarked, but not necessarily money out the door. Because those would require um, contracts and we're we're working through that, that process. A lot of times money also. Uh, with with HUD funding, there's a ninety or a hundred and twenty day closeout period. So we're in that closeout period now. Also, just wanted to uh, highlight the fact that HRP or our Home Housing Rehabilitation Program. It's actually allocated under CDVG. So there's a different column for it in the information that you have. However, that is not in addition to, I just wanted to be very clear that that is included in the CDVG allocation every year. And then lastly, just again, uh, the lead grant is a three and a half year grant period. And uh, again, the exten- the extension was granted to July of twenty twenty-four. For projects and funding, um, the Blueprint Communities Application, that is a collaborative application. To improve Allison Hill. Um, the next one that I'm talking about is specific in um, South Harrisburg. So very, very excited to work with a couple uh, organizations to focus on Allison Hill. Um, those three, oh, three of them, not, it's not all inclusive, is Fernandez Realty, Wild Heart Ministries. And Thrive Housing. So that collaborative application was just recently uh, awarded. So we'll be moving forward in assisting. So basically, the grant is for looking at um, duplication of services, gaps in services, what are the housing needs, education. Just looking at everything in a, a very global holistic way and making sure that the right. Resources are in place and that the residents of the Allison Hill community have access that they need to um, where they need to be. Choice Neighborhood Planning Grant, as I said, that's a five hundred thousand grant, uh, five hundred thousand dollar grant through HUD. To Harrisburg Housing Authority. Um, and that is to reimagine what Hu- uh, Hooverer Homes looks like. The next phase of that would be uh, an implementation grant up to about fifty-two million. And that will be the actual construction of it. So uh, only nine applications were granted in the nation. And uh, HHA and City of Harrisburg Hooverer Home Planning Grant ranked number one of those nine. Again, the lead grant, uh, a new notice of funding opportunity should come out in the spring. So we will be applying to extend and do another three and a half year grant period. There were four hundred and forty-three uh, memberships given for free in the City of Harrisburg by AAA. To first responders, teachers, um, anyone who had children. Uh, at one point, I had so many to give away, I kept saying, if you once were a kid, if you know a kid and you don't have a AAA membership, please apply. So was very, very grateful to AAA and we got four hundred and forty-three. Uh, we were even able, so we took care of our police department, fire. Um, and residents and staff members for the city first, but then we were able to extend that outside of because. We were originally given up to seven hundred and fifty. Um, so we got four hundred and forty-three, so super proud of that. And then lastly, on this slide, you'll see the coordination with the county. Um, regarding the Home ARP application, as I mentioned earlier. So there are four projects. That we are looking to contribute to through the Home ARP. Home ARP is a little bit of a hybrid. It's a mixture. Between home development and ESG. So this is a part of kind of the coronavirus back in twenty. Twenty and twenty twenty-one money, different from the American Rescue Plan Act money. Um, but it came in and it is specific for creation, renovation, and construction. Of affordable housing units to organizations that are um, directly impacting. And decreasing homelessness. So it's not for developers or just any uh, nonprofit organization. It's it's a very tight and narrow. Eligibility that's needed. So the four um, that we are looking to collaborate with are organizations that already have great. Uh, projects underway in the city. In no particular order, Thrive Housing, Brethren Housing. Uh, Veterans of Pennsylvania, and then Harrisburg Fair Housing Council. Um, the co- the complement of DBHD, very quickly, I am so happy to report all fourteen. Uh, positions are filled in my office. Um, and here on this slide, you will see the breakdown of. Race, ethnicity, gender, and management versus union in in the office. And I actually have an error on this one. So management versus union, there are actually ten. Management positions and four union. I kept going through these numbers and something didn't seem right. Last slide, um, how do we communicate? Um, we are constantly ha- taking walk-ins. So if the building is open. We are in the office and we talk directly to residents, organizations. So we're in Monday through Friday. We also have a a team email box or we all have um, separate emails as well. You can reach us by phone. And then we also participate in several um, community events, city forums, town halls. We do one-on-one site visits and uh, folks come in and organizations, businesses, stakeholders, residents come in and talk to us as well. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Hill, for that thorough presentation. I'd like to open this up now for any questions. From the council members, would any, does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Jones.
How you doing this evening, Ms. Hill? Um, as always, thank you for the great work that you do for the City of Harrisburg. I have one simple question. Um, with the lead department and the lead program, very familiar with it. Um, just where, wanted to ask, how many of the vendors, are you using the same vendors for the windows and lead or do you? Put out RFPs for that?
So we actually have to use a lead certified contractor. So there is, we work with um, Panoni. It is a company across the river who provides the training. There are only a handful in the state of organizations. That can give the lead certification. So if a contractor is interested, we are able to reimburse. We have money in the lead budget for that. Um, we send them to the class. They have to have at least two people certified. A supervisor and a worker. Um, and once they successfully pass that training, then they are able to attend their walkthroughs. Or bids that we put out. But it it's a little tighter than our HRP program. So a HRP program. Um, it can be a general contractor or that's basic system. So roof, plumbing, HVAC, electrical.
Right.
Nothing cosmetic. They still have to have all the taxes and licensing and things like that, but it's just an added level of certification for that.
Thank you. No further questions?
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, do you have any questions?
No questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you, Councilwoman um, Davis. Um, and good evening.
Good evening.
Director Hill, thank you for being here. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. President Bowers, do you have any questions?
Good evening. I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. Uh, I don't have any questions for you, but I'd like to say thank you to your team for the work you do and for always being available to the public. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Um, just a few happen to have the dates for the CDVG uh, meetings and hearings coming up.
So they are typically held in April. Um, so we keep a distribution list. The program manager compiles that list. So anyone that reaches out about them. So anyone that reaches out about them, we will have the save the date sent out once that is, once we're able to lock down a date for the two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you. Okay, well, thank you very much for being here and presenting your quarterly report. This concludes the Building and Housing Report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Will anyone be presenting on behalf of the Bureau of Business Development?
Good evening, Council. How are you doing today?
Good evening.
I am Jason Graves, Director of Business Development for the City of Harrisburg. So we will be starting off with the Economic Development slash Business Development, City Council Fourth Quarter Quarterly Report. This is a brief overview of, this is a brief overview of my actual description, my job description. I actually have basically two positions as far as with the actual business development, also with being an LERTA administrator for tax abatement. You can see my core responsibilities for actually having this position, highlighting basically small business and business development for the City of Harrisburg, looking at effective ways to expand businesses within the City of Harrisburg, so we can actually gain more notoriety to help smaller businesses bring larger businesses to forefront, to actually make more walkability in a lot of the areas that were needed. Working with small business enterprises such as the SB, WBE, MBE, DBE, and so forth. Again, there are many different organizations besides, as far as like determining who are actually certified for actually businesses to actually work within city air, city limits, and also within other areas. Working with the planning and zoning, as far as like looking at and identifying potential areas where we can actually meet to actually put in mixed houses, mixed use, addressing needs for a challenge and identifying areas where you actually should be able to have small businesses, again, looking for walkability. Being on the Transportation Board, basically looking towards more ineffective creative ways to actually have an effective ecosystem for transportation. And we know as far as like being residents here and being from here, you know, transportation has been slim to none a lot of times in a way. So it's basically trying to get that more catapult to actually make more of accessibility for a lot of the areas in our, in our community, community services and resources in certain areas. And city revitalization and development, again, this is part of an initiative as far as like what we are doing within business development, also with housing, also with the entire City of Harrisburg, so we actually grow the community. Fourth quarter summary, one of the things that we look, we're in the fourth quarter from like October until December, exploring representation for a food, citywide food co-op. I know we have a lot of areas that are actually separated, like you have Allison Hill with Dairy Street. I'm not sure as far as like with the uptown area, as far as what they're doing, their food initiative, also looking at the south side and also other areas of the hill. They're, looking, looking at other cities that I've actually looked at as far as like where food co-ops. I know there is a need to actually have an actual grocery store in a lot of areas. Some areas like Detroit, for instance, they actually have, like, I think like three actually full-service grocery stores that actually used to a natural food co-op. So that is a, probably an initiative that we could probably look forward to actually using within the, within the area. Business marketing plan for the actual city to actually outline certain areas within the city as far as like utilizing for downtown and other business districts that have not been in use for a lot of years, like corridors within Sixth Street, Market Street, other areas that have basically gone desolate over the years, and you've seen the decay. Exploring, again, future transportation and collaboration plans with the City of Harrisburg, also with CAT, Rabbit, and Sur. It's just an ongoing thing where that particularly is just looking for the funding. That's one of the biggest things, actually, the catapult, the hurdle to actually try to get a lot of the needs assessed, firstly, for transportation, because the lack of funding, its sources actually coming from the state representative, because a lot of stuff either goes to SEPT or goes to Port. So we miss a lot of things, because again, we are all separated because of the different entities as far as with the transportation. Now let's skip into another one, and one highlighted one is LERTA. The abatement program, and I know we've had a meeting prior to about the abatement program last year. As of Q four, there were no actual applicants for the LERTA program. And I know we spoke about this, and I know Solicitor Neil Grover actually basically came out and said that it's not actually working at that time. So there are other plans that we can actually use that I've actually been looking at. Again, we have to actually get in consensus for the county and also with the school district. There, it's just trying to find a way so you can actually utilize it a lot more, not making it probably as long-term, because the thing is, you, you kind of turn the LERTA application into a selling feature for people who are actually going to purchase homes. And as time goes on, when that ten-year span actually hits and it's over, they're going to be hitting a large, big tax, like payment, that you're probably not going to be able to afford. So a lot of people will often try to sell their homes before that abatement actually ends, which again, is going to create a, a whole cycle of basically houses that are empty or properties are empty. And that's what we don't want to do. You don't want to actually have a quick sale for a lot of things. Not how, some ways the LERTA actually comes off in certain ways. So economic development goals and for two thousand and twenty-four and beyond. I'm not going to go through all of these, you actually have a packet on your desk. This is actually an outline of the actual economic development plan. You can read at your own leisure. The plan actually will probably be finished, asked you for review for final, probably towards the end of March. I'm actually being asked to come to and speak in ICA probably towards the end of April, so it has to be done by then regardless. Visual is an aspect, that's the main thing actually has to get done. So after administration asks for reviews, I will send it to the council for their review as well. So other goals that we're actually having for two thousand and twenty-four, public meetings. These public meetings will be held primarily in certain locations with Allison Hill, South Allison Hill Uptown, Downtown and Midtown. One of the first locations we're looking at, we just have to get the schedule together, is going to be the Uptown for Cam Curtain YMCA. The main part of the discussions is based on diversity and economic empowerment and sustainability through what we can do in a lot of the neighborhoods to make everything, again, a better ecosystem, more walkability, and then, and address the needs and wants where we want to add to the areas. Also, again, it goes all within the same thing as conducting a needs assessment. It's, it's a recurring theme is what goes on, it's basically needs and wants, and again, looking forward to the future, so what we can grow for our actual city. I know as far as with COVID, and I know we losing the state workers, but we have to come to the reality, a lot of times, there should have been a plan many years ago, so we wouldn't have to fall into this burden. State workers are prevalent, but at the end of the day, for my lifetime, I honestly don't see, I've never really seen an influx of business because of the amount of stakeholders that we had. We had the parking, but again, we don't have that asset anymore. So the main focus needs to go upon the residents. Again, you want to have more marketing skills as far as like in the development, you want to get a worker talent pool, that focus has to go on, and it's a large onion that you have to peel back. But it is something that has to be very well-rounded to actually make something happen. If you look at other areas, again, we use, a lot of people use Lancaster as an example, but Lancaster is not a capital. Lancaster doesn't have the fifteen-plus exempt properties that they, that we have. So you have to look at other capitals and across the country, and those capitals, quite a few of them, they actually made that catapult to make it based off residential, because they were actually losing a lot of basically income. You have a lot of residents who aren't staying, and that's something that has to be, has to be reversed here, so we can actually look forward to the future. And this one also is another package you actually have on your counter, it's, it's a sample packet. So that packet is, it has a hamburger, so basically a restaurant thing, is for a culinary entrepreneurship class. So that class will be a collaboration between Nelva Wright within the Health Inspector, Mike Hughes from Mercantile, and also with Jeff Knight. And this is a sample packet, basically they're going through on how to actually start a business, because I know a lot of people come in and they basically go to Mercantile, it's the first place they do, and if they don't have everything, that, and right there to fill everything out, they send everything, everybody to me. And then with the zoning preferences, a lot of people don't know exactly where commercial, what they can use in a lot of areas. And we, I just had an incident, I'm not going to speak on who exactly what it was, but you have a lot of residents who are wanting to be entrepreneurs, they're looking at certain areas where they want to go, but that building is not actually zoned to actually be in. Or you have an outstanding issue where there are permits that were not actually used into actually fixing up an area. So it's deemed not usable for that actual space for retail space, and it puts the, the person who's actually renting the space and also owner, and also us in a bind, because we have to figure out what we can do to help them out. And that is the end of my slide, open for any questions.
Thank you. This actually should have been a bullet point under Community and Economic Development, so I will defer to our Community and Economic Development Chair, Chair Daniels.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Davis, do you have any questions?
Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Graves. Wow, you're doing a lot of work. It's refreshing to see, especially this culinary entrepreneurship navigating program. And I was wondering, are there any other entrepreneurship programs where you're teaching people how to go from an idea to finish?
That's going to be probably the first number when we, that one we do. I know Nelva was the one who actually came to me about that idea of doing that, because she had great money she had to use through her program. So one of the ones we look for probably retail, again, beauty and cosmetics. Those are things, again, we're just trying to make something like, this make, not make nothing out of something, but just trying to give people the idea of what they can actually do versus they're trying to figure it out. And then they get stuck, and then they have to keep coming back. So a lot of times, a lot of people don't come down here to just basically picking pieces at a time. And you basically have to start all over again if you don't have the right things in order, so.
Thank you. Very good initiative. I know sometimes people have ideas and they just don't know where to go, what office to go to, what to do. So I can appreciate this, I'll be sharing this information throughout the community. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
That's President Bowers.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers. First of all, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Graves. I'm excited about the Culinary Entrepreneurship Seminar classes, workshops, don't know the exact title for them, because I think education is important for anyone trying to start a business here in the city, because a lot of times they become discouraged when they don't have the information readily available. And I think that inhibits a lot of our small business owners from really getting started. So I look forward to that, as well as more to come about, you know, different, different business opportunities. Do we have dates for these classes?
Not as of right now. I actually spoke with the YMCA, Cam Curtain, this was probably about two weeks ago, at a ribbon cutting, because they asked me, when do you want to do? It's just trying to line everybody's schedule up. I know one of the, one people was like Nelva, because I know she's out a lot, like on the road, basically doing a lot of inspections or going to a, or going to certain conferences to bring things back. So it's, it's just a matter of time to line everything up.
Okay, and do we know how long, like the series is, is it planned for like a six-week series?
No, it's mostly, that's, and that was one of the things too, we, it may, for the most part, it may be a day. It's, it just depends on, we gotta, we're gonna have to do a dry run to see exactly how, how long it's actually going to take. Because I knew you look at that, because actually when I did it, I had to break it down to try to do it one day. So, but the thing is, it's like what the timeline is actually going to be, so.
All right, and then just to be sure, there's no cost to the public?
No, no, yeah.
And then just a lot of the information you provided, it's very, very good information, a lot of it's looking forward more so. And just since this is a, a fourth quarter report, I know the timing of it can be a little confusing. But if you could just give us like one or two accomplishments from the fourth quarter of twenty-three, which would be like October through December timeframe?
Let's see, one, I would say, one of the accomplishments, I say, I've got a lot, trying to think of one that we can actually pinpoint. I would, one of the, I would say one of the accomplishments is, and I, I didn't actually mention it in full, because it's actually on my PowerPoint. I know one of the big accomplishments is actually moving forward with the Transfer Center for CAT. That, it has, it's, I had a meeting, it took me a while to actually get that meeting. One of the biggest things is basically trying to get a private piece for it, because private money is going to have to be used for it, because it can't be all through public transportation money or from state. I know a lot of people just like me, myself, it's probably going to be a temporary thing as far as like having the Transfer Center on Cameron Street, because it's been so far gone as far as the project, and then other things that have had, have occurred, which stopped it from initially having an actual transfer, basically a transportation center from two thousand and fourteen, because of how things were purchased and not in the correct way and so forth. But this is actually trying to get it together, because it, that right there would be a piece that would basically catapult not just the city, but the region for the future, looking at something that would highlight the city to actually bring more people here. Again, transportation is a big thing, so if you have a three-in-one as far as that would bus, and also train, and also have walkability, that's, that's something that you have to a downtown area to actually market the area for a better, basically for a better future.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And if it's any other highlights you'd like to email us, I'd appreciate it as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Councilwoman Rawls, any questions?
Thank you, President Bowers, and thank you for being here, Director Graves. I just had one question, it was also on the culinary and entrepreneurship, sorry. Well, first of all, it looks, I love the idea having a entrepreneurship, because I think that we don't know what we don't know, and I think that's the whole purpose of you and Director White doing this. So I know it would be a lot of information to cover in a day, but I can understand you say it's like a dry run. So how will you, how are you all thinking about letting the public know? And if you already said it, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, I didn't, I didn't, yeah, you didn't miss anything. I know Nelva actually does, one of the ways we could advertise, I know Nelva actually does a, she does a, a, losing my train of thought right now, apologize. She actually does a, like a handout at least once a month, highlighting like different initiatives that through the city, and that will be probably one way that we can actually use it. And also through the avenues of where we're actually going to have the programs, actually ask them to help us promote. So that would be, that'd be the easiest way. So when we actually narrow down exactly where we're actually going to do them at, we can actually use the promotion from all, all places to actually promote to ones, basically work together.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Thank you so much, and I look forward to it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
No, Madam President, I spoke with Director Graves about a great majority of this, and I too love the entrepreneurship. Someone has a certified food handler and also an entrepreneur, I could definitely appreciate the value in it, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jones, any questions?
No, I have more of a comment. Director Graves, commend you on the work that you're doing. Councilman Rawls had asked my question, how are you going to advertise and see? I want to go in a little different direction, everybody's talking about the food. No, I wanted to know, you're going to be very busy with this agenda for two thousand and twenty-four. I just wanted to let you know that if there's anything that I can do to help you, easy, let's have a conversation, and I like what this looks like. We definitely need to start turning the lights on for our city to attract more business and more people wanting to come here to do business with our city, so I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from our Public Safety Committee. I will defer to our Public Safety Committee Chair, Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Someone here to represent the Borough Police.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Deputy Chief Young, newly appointed, taking over for Deputy Chief Sorenson. Captain Whelan will give you the presentation of the quarterly, fourth quarterly report.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like our deputy chief said, my name is Terry Whelan. I'm a captain with our Bureau of Police here. Uh, I head up our Criminal Investigation Division. And what I'm going to do here is just give you a couple of highlights. I was informed I have about ten minutes. Last time I had ten minutes, I took about forty minutes. So I don't think anybody really wants to grow old here this evening, so I'll I'll try to take uh, as little time as possible. But I do want to be thorough in my in my delivery. Uh, our police bureau, i- if you weren't aware, is headed up by a police commissioner, uh, Thomas Carter. We also have a deputy chief and a team of four captains. All those are considered to be management. We have a hundred and thirty-two sworn officers as of today. Between AFME and management personnel, we have a hundred and ninety-three total souls on board with our our police uh, bureau. Uh, what I'm intending to do here is just give you a couple of highlights that I that we have as far as our um, highlights and goals. And then I'm going to recap uh, as I go over some statistics and stuff that we've had for quarter number four for twenty twenty-three. Some of the fourth quarter department highlights we had, can everybody hear me? I can't quite tell. I didn't want to get that feedback thing going. We had the uh, group violence intervention and prevention program. They hired a project manager on November twenty-seventh of last year. His name is Angelo Craig. He's seated underneath the grandfather clock. You're going to hear from that gentleman here in a couple of minutes. He's a nice guy. Do yourselves a favor. If you haven't already met him, go ahead and do so. I think he's going to work out well for us. Uh, we had two hundred and thirty-eight cases assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division detectives in quarter four of uh, twenty twenty-three. Community service aides handled about a hundred and ninety-two calls for service and participated in ten community events. They're going to speak on that uh, after me. I guess our our CSA people are are up uh, after I am. We did have two officers that were hired and they entered the the uh, January twenty twenty-four Hack Academy. They're up there right now. They started uh, early January. They'll be done by spring. They're they're supposed to be done. Uniform Patrol handled about eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight calls for service. That's that's quite a lot for for three months, if you can imagine that. Twenty twenty-three in all, uh, the police bureau handled seventy-six thousand six hundred and eighty-seven calls for service, which is quite a bit for, again, for a twelve-month period. Did have a couple of goals we had set. Uh, it was set forth in a document that I emailed to each of you uh, on the twentieth of this month, about a week ago today. Um, that is, first of all, to retain all current employees and recruit sworn personnel. Um, obviously, we need people uh, in our department. I'll I'll touch on that here in a few minutes. Uh, cease utilization of the old metro functions within the bureau, provide increased police information to citizens, uh, conduct police lobby remodel and move the evidence room, and also to maintain a homicide clearance rate above the national average, reduce gun violence in the city of Harrisburg, and maintain and improve community service aides integration into the city's community. All those goals are very important to us as a police bureau, and we've we've made strides uh, to accomplish them. Some of the uh, quarter four of twenty twenty-three uh, highlights that I I want to hit on here are vice detectives were assigned twenty-six cases during that uh, time period. Uh, the Adult Offender Section in in Criminal Investigation Division had fifty-one cases. Juvenile Offender Section had a hundred and sixty-one cases. Uh, Forensics People were very busy. They had they handled a hundred and twenty crime scenes. They processed about four hundred and thirteen videos. And uh, they took eleven uh, fingerprint cases where it rendered into that system to uh, return fingerprints to identify perpetrators of of various crimes. We also had ten uh, cell write downloads. That's our our cell phone downloading software that we have. We can um, dump dump cell phones and get pictures and phone uh, records and all that stuff out of them. Uh, Technical Services Division, uh, we did have a a bureau-wide training uh, this year. Uh, it took place up at the Lick Building, which is basically mothballed because they're doing a lot of remodeling up there. Uh, that was considered active assault training. We do that every other year. This coming year, we're going to be doing um, civil civil disturbance training. And last year was the year that we did this active assault, like active shooter uh, in schools and in public places. Uh, unfortunately, last year it was on the forefront of of the headlines. And uh, we had already planned for it to to um, to do that training bureau-wide, so every member of our bureau had had received that training. They did conduct nine backgrounds for police applicants uh, in in the last quarter of of uh, twenty twenty-three. Three out three candidates received conditional offers. Um, two were hired because one of them didn't pass one of the tests that he needed in order to get into the academy. They, again, they started here in January, and they're they're currently up there, two uh, successful candidates. The current reci- uh, recruiting cycle that we have right now started November eighth of last year. Uh, the testing cycle is, it's going to conclude here uh, March second and third. So this Saturday, Sunday, we're doing our physical agility, and then we're going to do our written on Sunday. And then we'll go through the background process through that. And I'll talk a little bit about our hiring goals for the first half of this year. Uh, the door system, uh, they took total of uh, six hundred and thirteen reports. It saved about nine hundred and nineteen hours just in the in the third quarter alone. Uh, if you take the the cost of benefit at it, it saved a little bit over twenty-four thousand dollars with that um, automated reporting system. Parking enforcement was a little bit busy. Uh, myself, I hate getting parking tickets. I've only had five of them in my entire life. That's how much it means to me to not get parking tickets. But at any rate, our our parking enforcement uh, people took in a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars um, in the third quarter alone. That includes uh, boot fees, tickets issued, bags and signs, as well as permits that were issued throughout the city. Put four brand-new patrol vehicles into service uh, this this last quarter of twenty twenty-three. We had an arson truck that we needed to get outfitted, and uh, that's now in service. Our arson investigator has a a suitable vehicle to get all of his equipment and everything into in order to go to fire scenes and assist our brothers and sisters in the Fire Bureau. Now, we also put an electric vehicle into into service in the last quarter of the year. Uniform Patrol Division handled a little bit over eighteen thousand calls for service in the in the last quarter of the year. Our coresponders fielded about three hundred and two calls for service. Very successful, very robust program that we have with them. Um, we also promoted three patrol officers to the rank of corporal uh, this this last quarter of the year. As far as our annual goals, I promised you I was going to touch on some of those. Uh, retaining recruit uh, employees, we had a recruiting booth up here at the the farm show um, and the indoor show as well. We've also had billboards. If you couldn't see them, the the localist one, the closest one that I know was in Steelton, down at the down by the east end of of uh, Steelton. Contacting local and tri-county colleges and universities as well. Put some of our recruiting literature out there and and get our get our name and our and our label out um, regionally. Um, they also attended some career fairs and the social e- social media and email blasts with uh, the application called policeapp.com. I'm on Facebook myself, and I I uh, I look at that all the time because I think it's kind of neat to see our own label being out there on on social media. And we also have our flyers and postcards that we're putting out in local businesses and colleges. Um, as far as priority of hiring, as it stands right now, we do have nineteen patrol officer vacancies. Our goal is to get at least three, was to get at least three into this this year. And then once a July Hack Academy starts up, uh, where our goal is to get ten uh, into that. We'll see how that goes after this weekend when we have people running around the the track up there and and trying to uh, become Harrisburg police officers. Currently, we have two detective vacancies. We have one forensic investigator vacancy. We and as far as I know, we have one CSA vacancy as well. Um, they're going to speak on that here in a few minutes. Uh, cease some mu- uh, utilization of metro functions within the police bureau. Uh, they are going to tire technologies and trying to get all of our systems to integrate and and all the old information and stuff to carry over into a new system. So that's essentially going to, metro is going to be a defunct uh, system and it's going to go away. So we're going to go full CODI, which is our report management system. And then we're going to go to a system called Power Time for for payroll. Should I have got that? Provide increased uh, police information to citizens. We are in a contract agreement proc- uh, which is in progress with Crime Watch mapping. Crime Watch is how we put things out. In fact, our our year-end document for twenty twenty-three went public this morning when we we put it up on Crime Watch. Uh, we got put a number of things out there from community events to unfortunate, you know, crimes and things like that that happen and just to keep the public informed. Enable software process to enable RMS and Crime Watch data interface. It's something that's just, it's always looking to improve. In fact, I was talking this morning with the our representative from Crime Watch. They're very responsive to to any requests that we have. And also to can continue quarterly and and annual reports. Like I said, our annual report went public this morning, and it's it's a pretty neat document, actually. Want to want to check that out. Uh, the the lobby remodel is um, uh, waiting for final city approval of the contract. They did have a couple of contractors that were uh, looking into to providing that service to us. Uh, maintain a homicide clearance rate above the national average. Twenty twenty-two, uh, the national rate was fifty-two percent. The twenty twenty-three number is not posted as of yet nationally. Um, our average was sixty-three percent, so we essentially met that goal. I don't like to say that because it's it was just unfortunate. You know, we do have those kind of things that happen. They need to be investigated and solved, and we did pretty well at that last year. So that was that was twenty twenty-two. Twenty twenty-three, we were at sixty-one percent solvability rate. And again, I don't have that national average. My guess is it's going to be somewhere in the fifties when it when it comes to that. Producing gun violence in the city of Harrisburg, uh, our actionable items that we have on that is utilizing the uh, GBI methodology. And uh, they're going to speak on on that here in a little bit as far as what we're uh, doing towards that end. Uh, increase use of technology, improve training, refine investigative techniques. There are several pieces of of software that we're looking to gain this year, um, at least in the investigative division to um, improve our investigative prowess, if you will. Maintain and improve community service aides integration into into the city's community. I'm not going to steal all the thunder from from Mr. Uh, Mr. Craig and and Ms. Houston about that, but essentially they want to conduct those neighborhood events and attend the citywide events like we like we have in in the past. And I'll I'll let that up to them to um, to speak on. We did have these these grants that we, um, well, two of them were awarded between the GBI grant and the um, Gun Violence Investigation and Prosecution Grant. One of the things that we're looking to do here in order to curb some of the violence that's been taking place. My my opinion was last year, we were pretty successful um, for a number of reasons, but one of them being the saturation details that were funded by that particular grant. Uh, we are looking to ramp up those uh, saturation details again. They're they're just enforcement details and get get more officers out there um, on the streets and and interacting with people. It it goes a long way towards curbing some of the violence. We do have a meeting this Friday about the local law enforcement grant, um, which was as of December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, but has not been awarded yet. We are looking to um, to push that a little bit and get that awarded. Uh, very important. There's a number of things that are riding on that. Um, some of that investigative software and and tools that we're looking to to obtain, plate readers and and things of that nature, body worn cameras, that all rides on that grant. So we're going to have a meeting here on Friday morning with uh, Ms. Volmer and Ms. Fountain to to discuss what we need to do to move forward and to get that grant awarded. And I don't want to, again, I don't want to steal the thunder from our our brothers and sisters in the uh, Community Services Division, but uh, so they can speak on their um, interaction and communication as far as what uh, community events that they they attended over the last quarter of the year. That's all I have. Is there any questions?
Uh, yeah. With the with the grants, the group violence grant, group violence intervention, um, and then you have the, you said gun violence. Is that the VIP or what is the difference between the two grants?
So what's GVI, which is what uh?
Yeah, I know what the.
Yeah, and then the other is GVIP, which is the PCCD grant?
Got you.
All right, which is it's uh, it's LLES is the same as a uh, PCCD grant. So we've already got awarded the uh, the GVIP. Uh, they cover gun violence prevention and things like that.
Right.
Yeah, so GVIP stands for Gun Violence Investigation.
Yeah, because there's several grants out there. You have the VIP Violence Intervention Program, and then you have the GIP, VIP, and then you got the GVI, all of these.
Acronyms?
All these acronyms.
But just as confusing, but it is essentially three separate grants.
Right.
Between the GBI grant, that's what we call it, the GBI grant, the uh, Gun Violence Investigation and Prosecution, which we were awarded, and we've already um, started to take advantage of that.
Good.
At those funds and um, the local law enforcement, which we are looking to um, get awarded here soon.
Okay, this um, one of the other questions that I had um, about some of the technology and some of your goals moving forward. What do you think uh, is best useful for you guys? Are you still, are we utilizing even, are we even utilizing like um, SpotShotter or anything like that?
We don't, we don't have the ShotSpotter yet. That is one of the um, items that was carried under the GVIP grant.
Be clear, be clear.
No, here here's the issue with that. Uh, I'll be honest with you. Um, if there was a recent article published, um, it has Chicago PD. Chicago was a uh, a big user of ShotSpotter. And uh, in the recent article, I think they've extended that till September. And then the the way I understand it, it's not going to go much past that. So as far as what we need or what I think we need, um, we've had a lot of success off LPRs. That, I think, would help the investigative efforts. More so than what a ShotSpotter. If if we take the the concept of what that is, uh, it takes about a minute for somebody to diagnose that's a shot. And then in order to get it out to a dispatcher and then out to a police unit to respond to that, we're probably five, ten minutes before we got that. And I think that's the issue or one of the issues that Chicago's having with it is the delay in response.
And the cost.
Right, what's that? I'm sorry.
And the cost.
And the cost. So uh, I'm glad you brought that up. The uh, the ShotSpotter is uh, after the grant wears off, and you're aware of this, is that 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 maintenance and service agreement is uh, annually two hundred and ten thousand dollars, which will go into the budget. So it's kind of hard, it's kind of hard for me to swallow that amount of money to put it into a budget or a system that that I'm not sure we're going to get the best results for the citizens out of. That makes sense?
Got you, yes. And my last question, so I want to pass it on to my colleagues as well. The three hundred and fifty thousand uh, that you can save the city um, by the cameras, the body cameras, can you explain that?
So the uh, the body cameras are tied up into the LLES grant. Uh, the LLES grant, which Captain Whelan stated, uh, has not been awarded as of yet. Uh, it's not been awarded to paper, so it's still pending review through PCCD. Um, again, we have a meeting on Friday. Uh, I try to at least contact uh, Ms. Volmer and Ms. Fountain at least once a week to go, okay, so what's the status of this grant, so we can get it awarded? Uh, if we can get the grant awarded, we would be able to put the upfront cost, the three hundred and thirty thousand dollars into the grant, which will cover the price of the equipment and first year service maintenance fees, and then we would pick up the back end of that. Uh, so it's a huge cost savings if we can get the grant awarded.
You gotta get that grant. All right, I'd like to see if my colleagues have any questions. Start to my immediate right, Mr. Rodriguez, Councilman Rodriguez, my apologies.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Um, thank you, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. Uh, not a question, just more of a point of information. Um, so the ShotSpotter is actually self-dispatched, so when the shot goes off, it actually integrates with the CODI system. An officer would know when the shot's within a minute. And if they're within the vicinity, they could self-dispatch immediately. Um, it'd go off on their phone and their CODI in the car. So that was one of the benefits as opposed to going to the county and then getting the call. So I just wanted to clarify that, but that was all. Thank you.
Yeah, it's still going to take some time to get it. I understand where you're coming from, but it's still going to take some time for us to get it.
Plus, I mean, when we're comparing to Chicago, think of how many murders.
Oh, absolutely.
It's nowhere near what Harrisburg is dealing with.
And I hope we don't ever get to that.
Right, right. So I I mean, to contrast that, it's like, you know, saying Nike to someone that makes sneakers in kind of their yard in contrast. But thank you, gentlemen.
Councilman Ross?
I wasn't going to step over. We're not all. Women aren't always pushing, so I didn't step. I waited. Um, but thank you, Councilman Jones. Um, thank you both for being here tonight. I just have one question. Um, as a teacher, I do know a lot of acronyms. But you said LPR, and I wasn't sure, and I made one up in my head. License plate reader, but I don't know if I'm right. Okay. I was over here like, I think that's what that means.
And the the reason, if if I may.
No, please, because then I was going to ask you, you use that to solve, I mean, I know you can use that to solve crimes, but do you use that for fi- shots fired? I thought you might, I didn't think so, but I thought I heard you put it in the same spot, so then I was confused. I was going to ask.
We've had plate readers in the city now, uh, three different locations. And we've, we're tracking a pretty good series of small to medium and and a couple of large victories. I'll I'll just call them that with those three locations. I'll just call them that with those three locations alone. And that's anything from tracking people that are driving, obviously, cars. If we get a plate off of a car that's involved in a crime, we can track it through these three different locations that we have in the city. It works out very well. And that's something that we can use as part of our investigation, you know, to further enhance, stuff that's already good. Victims and witnesses and all that stuff, you know, that's people, you know, talking with people. And that's an absolute essential part of conducting a major investigation. But you start throwing technology in on top of it, plate readers or something that, in my opinion and experience, that our detectives and stuff have gone through, that we rely on those heavily. That's what finding wanted people, stolen cars. We all know we've had a lot of stolen cars in the city over the last year. We can track those, and they've recovered several of those vehicles without any kind of injury or anything like that or damage to property. Does that answer your question, man?
Yes, yes, it does. And I had another one, and then it went away. Oh, I know what it was. So with, instead of getting the ShotSpotter, I'm hoping I'm calling it the right name, would you then say you would use the grant money from the grant that started for G?
GVIP.
There we go. It was right. They put it back up there. So you would use the money from that to get more plate readers? Is that what your hope is to do?
Yes. And then tied into the LLES, there's already two there. So once again, that, once that grant gets awarded to paper, what they're telling me is awarded to paper, there's at least two there, and then we would take the money that's, if PCCD allows us, take that money that's designated for ShotSpotter and actually see if we could work that towards more LPRs or license plate readers, I'm sorry.
I knew what you meant now. See, I had, once you tell me what it means, I got it all the way. Okay. Thank you so much. That's all I have.
Okay, Madam President?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Vice President Green?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your report. I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Davis?
Miss Michael. So another question about the ShotSpotter. And I'm trying to understand all the acronyms and everything as well. You mentioned the license plate readers. That grant or that program is going to help replace the ShotSpotter, if I'm hearing that correctly or?
So it would be the money that's designated to the GVIP grant, we would try to switch, if agreed through PCCD, we would have to contact them to see if we can make that switch. And then once, once we're able to make that switch, the money that's designated towards ShotSpotter would go towards additional LPRs or license plate readers.
Okay.
It's a habit, I'm sorry.
It's confusing. I would think that the ShotSpotter is a very important piece of technology to have. A lot of the crimes that are committed are, people aren't in cars. They're on foot in alleys and, you know, they're shooting people. And I would think that the ShotSpotter would be able to detect that shot right away and assist officers to be able to get to that scene quickly. More, you know, efficiently will help you do your jobs more efficiently and solve that crime.
We had the system years ago, and I know there's improvements in technology by far, but we had the system years ago, and it didn't quite give us the results that we wanted. If we look at results, and again, some of the, some of the articles, and we'll go back to Chicago, publishing what they recently did, and some of the other stuff with the dispatch to cell phones or to the, to the MDTs in the car, mobile data terminal, sorry, to the terminals in the car. The, we've had a lot of success off LPRs, cameras, and collecting information. It's been a lot of, it's been a couple, as Captain Wieland stated, it's been a couple huge successes that we're able to, once we get information, is to able to more or less monitor where that car goes or track where that car goes.
Thank you for everything that you're doing out in the community, and I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So I think if you can explain a little bit about the license plate reader. I know you can't give everything, but just a little idea of how it works so there's a better understanding. It's a camera system that, you know, how it helps you get to the numbers and the results that you guys get to.
Sure. How it works, essentially, like I said, we have three camera sites in the city presently. If, say, for instance, you rob a bank and a bystander says, hey, this is the plate, ABC 123. We could take that plate and put it into our system. And as well as, there's other jurisdictions that have, not the exact same system that we do, but we have email threads and stuff like that. We can send them out to surrounding jurisdictions and say, hey, can anybody check their LPRs for this plate so we can start to track it? Obviously, if we have a plate, we can figure out who owns that vehicle, but we can also put that vehicle in close proximity to where that crime may have occurred, whether it was inbound or outbound from the crime. Likewise, stolen vehicles, we've actually, we talked about those mid-level successes that we have. Nonviolent crimes, just stolen cars. If you steal my car, I'm going to get pretty mad and I want it back. But, you know, we do the best that we can without any kind of, without getting anybody hurt and without damaging property. One of the ways that we've done that is we have a couple of officers that are, they're into it. Like they, they monitor those LPR sites and they put them in, these stolen vehicles and stuff into that. And when it comes up, they actually get those notifications on their cell phones or their city email. And if they say, hey, this same car goes through that intersection every day between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock. Well, guess what? If you're an officer that works between 3:00 and 4:00 o'clock, you just sit right out there and you watch the car go by because you know the habits that that car may have or the people that are driving it. That's one of the things that we've done. Wanted people that are associated with vehicles, we could put those tags in those vehicles, in those LPR systems as well. And then if that car goes through the site, it'll send a notification out to everybody that's on that list to receive those notifications. So essentially, that's how it works. It is a neat system. I was a little skeptical of it at first, but until we actually got it and then started working with it and then started tracking successes, I'm sold. And if you start talking in terms of cost to benefit, you know, with what we know that we've used now over the last year and a half that we've had this system in place, we really kind of ramped it up over the last eight to 10 months, and we showed those successes. And it's definitely well spent. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, sir. I was just trying to give Councilwoman Davis and maybe my other colleagues as well a little bit more information around the LPRs and how they work. So thank you for that. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. Thank you, guys.
I can cover the Community Services Division. They're both here. If we got questions, what we can do is we can bring them up. So that way, because the last couple of times we've done this, there's been a lot of questions about their particular area, so we should be able to answer those.
You can bring them up, though.
Okay.
Yeah.
So as far as the quarterly report that we submitted for the fourth quarter, Community Services Division, the Animal Control Officers responded 306 calls for service, issued six citations as a result of the animal investigations. In the fourth quarter, the CP unit handled approximately 314 calls for service. And you'll have to slow me down if I get to talk really fast.
You're going fast. You're going fast.
I'll try to slow down. Just picked up on that. In the fourth quarter, the CSA unit handled approximately 192 calls for service. In the fourth quarter, the HUD unit handled 333 calls for service. And again, when we get to, let me cover one other part of this, and then we can open it up for questions. And then I'm sure you're going to have questions. The only other thing would be community engagements and interactions and communications for the fourth quarter of 2023. Officers in community service aides participated in the following events for the fourth quarter, which is trunk or treat, trick or treat, the Thanksgiving holiday parade, Thanksgiving meal giveaway, winter wonderland event, shop with a cop, Toys for Tots, Shades of Greatness, HHA Holiday Parade, New Year's Eve Celebration. So that was as far as the information that was in the quarterly report that was presented to you. Again, we have Mr. Craig, who's the recently, we'll say, hired GBI project manager. He's still trying to get his feet wet and get his wheels up underneath of him. So he's handling the GBI part of that. And then I think we're all familiar with Ms. Houston down at the end of the table. So we can open it up to any questions you may have. But those two particular areas.
All right. Mr. Craig, Ms. Hudson, thank you for coming this evening. I will start with Ms. Hudson, since we ended with the community service aides interaction in the community. One of my questions would be, I'm looking at the, from A to J, if my colleagues are following along here, some of the, some of the activities that took place inside of the community. To me, you know, to be honest with you, it looks like some of these were already scheduled events. But I do see in your goals for the first quarter, hopefully, it's for the first quarter of 2024, creating events with you and Mr. Craig to bring people, you know, to you instead of, you know what I mean? Creating an event that you can get more community interaction that's not a scheduled event that you guys didn't create? If you understand what I'm saying.
So there are four more events that we participated in. I'll be very honest with you. I watched a community policing webinar a few weeks ago, and one of the main comments that they kept saying all throughout the webinar was that you need to attach yourself to events that already exist. That is a part of outreach and engagement. And I believe that, so from my position. Do I think that it's important for us to create events that people come to us? Yes. But it's very important for us to attach ourselves to events that already exist, have been around for a while, where there's already engagement happening so that we can engage with the community that is there. That's my perspective on that.
And that's, and you're not wrong about that. The only thing I would add to that is like, it is important for you to go to these events, and I wasn't like discrediting these events, but I'm saying something that can add to that. By creating your own events with the effect that that would have on a community, you will be identified as the event planner versus trick, because people weren't coming to trick or treat to talk about, you know, group violence and CSA work. You understand what I'm saying? I think it's, just for me, I just think it would be more helpful to give you guys that more visibility, because a lot of people, just, and you're aware of that, a lot of people have complaints about the CSAs. So I'm just trying to give ways to add to that, because I think the department, I mean, that, those positions are necessary for our community. But if we structure them properly, not to say that you're not structured properly, but if we structure them in a way that we're more proactive, I think that we would get better results from the community instead of the responses that I have been receiving, and I'm sure you have as well. So that's all. I wasn't beating up what you're already knowing. I'm just trying to add to.
So we do have several events planned for 2024. I did send that over to City Council December 18th of 2023 with the goals for 2024. Those included community barbecues, those included a mentorship program, those included...
A what?
I'm sorry?
A what?
A mentorship program. Those included, what else was there? Those mentorship programs. There's a youth basketball program that we're trying to create for the beginning of the summer, end of the summer. Those are all things that are, we are working on currently. And so those can be discussed then when you guys come to us to present for the first quarter of 2024. There's a lot going on. I don't know if all of you know, I'll be very honest and frank. I am the sole organizer of the National Night Out event. And I don't know if any of you guys have ever did any sort of event management, managing, organizing, creating logistics. That is a huge undertaking. It truly, truly is. That is a job in itself. And so I have tried for the past two years to hold that ship while also having the role of supervising CSAs who have a different, per se, role to fill. While they are very, very helpful during the event, you know, leading up to the event, the setup, during, like I said, after the event, they have been crucial, and I appreciate so much of their help. A lot of what my role and position has been, has been to be, like I said, the sole organizer. Now, I'm hoping that that will change for this year, but I'll be very honest with you. Nobody else is taking that ownership on. So like I said, that is also a job in itself. So while I am all for creating events for the CSAs to provide engagement, I just need council and the administration to understand the role that I play in certain, in certain things. And I just, I have to be very frank, because it's getting to where I keep trying to explain my role, what I do here, and I don't think sometimes that it's being heard or understood, but I just want to be very frank in that.
Well, thank you for, you know, your dual roles. I mean, National Night Out is a pretty large event, and if you're the only one doing that, why is that? Why don't you have any help? Okay, all right. But anyway, thank you for doing that, you know, so, and I think it's important that you do have the opportunity to share that information so there's a better understanding of what's at task for you as, you know, the lead on that, in that department, okay? All right. Mr. Craig, thank you for being here. We see you were newly hired, 11/27/23. We have a constricted timeline for this GBI. I know we've all went down Friday. Captain Winder has been going down to York to see some of the interactions of how this actually works, which was, I was glad that I was able to see how that goes. I'm glad we were all there together to see how that, how that goes. I think it will be very effective for our community. But being that this grant for GBI is going to end in June of '24, how soon do you think we are ready to roll this out for your portion of it?
Good evening, everyone. It's a privilege to be here. To answer your question, it's multi-layered. As you said, I started in November 27th, and in that short period of time, we've managed to, there's steps that we have to take. As you're well aware, we met with you, and you're very knowledgeable and understanding of the process, what we're trying to do. But the first part of the quarter, we had to establish committees as mandated by the grant. So we had to establish a governance committee, which is just a big fancy word for your executive committee. And then I just completed setting up my provider committee, which are, you know, they're really the lifeline of these, the end goal, which is to have a call-in. The providers are the people that are going to help these young men and/or women, if they're there, to turn their lives around. So in that short period of time, I've managed to set up a governance committee, provider committee. Provider committee set up those meetings. And to get to your ultimate question, we anticipate on having Harrisburg's first call-in in September. So we've lined up a venue, which right now is going to be the Harrisburg Museum. And that's our anticipated date with Captain Winder's help and support. We've, we've been told that not too many other cities who've entered into the grant were able to move so expeditiously as we have been thus far in a shortened period of time. I've heard that some GBI project managers spend almost six months to a year just to get acclimated, let alone form all their committees.
Yeah, it's a pretty extensive process. Again, being able to witness it for myself, it was powerful and definitely needed in our area. But what happens when June 24 rolls around, is this, will this be, will be more funding coming to this grant? If you actually are in But, uh, what happens, um, when June 24 rolls around, is this, will this be, will be more funding coming to this grant if, if you actually are in motion? That, that was pretty much what the question I'm asking.
That question is above my pay grade. I have no idea. That part I'm not privy to.
Captain Winder.
Yeah, good evening. So I know that they were looking to see what additional funding is going to be out there, uh, for the GBI. But for right now, I was able to get with, uh, the assistance of the command staff to get my project manager and my, um, support and outreach coordinator covered in the budget. Okay? So we're still moving forward on that. So that's covered. The good news is, is that with the GBI, a lot of these pieces that Mr. Craig is putting together don't cost anything.
Right.
These are all providers that he has pulled together that are like, yeah, I want to assist. Or all law enforcement, including, uh, judges, uh, Dauphin County Commissioners, uh, your district attorney, your US attorney, uh, probation. He's able to pull them all together and they're like, yeah, I want to be a part of this. Then, like you just mentioned about, you know, setting up our call-in, which we want to have at the museum, because when you have these call-ins, which is bringing in these individuals, uh, that we are going after, looking at, that they're creating the most problems in our communities and we're wanting to give them another opportunity, another chance, show them another way to go about their lives without resorting to the violence and, and stuff like that. That's what the call-in is. The call-in has those individuals, everybody from the community that supports them, all of your, uh, providers. And we're talking about real providers, the ones that offer up jobs to convicted felons, the ones that are offering up mentorship programs, the ones that are offering up assistance with food insecurities and all that sort of stuff. And Mr. Craig also secured, uh, um, providers to help with the mental health aspect of it as well. This isn't costing us anything. This is just a matter of time. It's very, very time consuming.
Yeah.
The most expensive part that we had to pay out so far was with the national-
Network.
National network. And that's because they are the, the sole providers of this sort of information. So he has been in immediate contact with them and continues to stay in constant contact with them to get any and all information that's needed so that we are going to be prepared for when we have our first call-in.
Okay. And the reason why I wanted to, to, to explain and expound on that is just simply because, um, you can see the condition our community's in. With these shootings and our community is very concerned. Everyone deserves public safety. Um, in the workplace, school, no matter where you are, that's to be the number one priority is public safety. So I think it's important for our community to hear, um, how this process works and what's actually, um, planning to be done and what's actually being done today about a lot of the violence that we're seeing in our community. But I, I was asking about that date of the 20, I mean, of June 24, simply due to funding. Now, are you GVIP? Will that couple that? Um, or did his salary get rolled into your budget? Um, so I want to make sure we know that this can continue to happen.
Yep, this is going to continue to happen. Um, the salary got rolled in to our budget along with the salary for the part-time supporting outreach coordinator. That also got rolled in. Now, while the, uh, grant is still funded, of course, we get reimbursed through the grant. But after that, to keep this thing going, uh, command staff and everybody is real gracious and like, yeah, let's do this.
Okay. One other question, and I'll pass it on to my colleagues. Um, I know an initial grant was 500,000 for that, and we was looking at how much Jay, John Jay College was getting, almost half of that grant. Um, is there any discussion about that number being reduced moving forward? Um, will they eventually drop off as the experience, um, is, is more entrenched? Because we, you know, we went to York, I think they're what, five, six years in? And are, do we know if they're still using John Jay?
Um, from my understanding, they are. Um, I know that this was a conversation that we had, that we'd been talking about with the cost of this thing. So everything's up for negotiations. I wish I had a clear answer for you. Um, but we're pushing to be like, listen, a lot of these things we currently have and we got in place, so we don't need you for this, this, or this.
Got you.
What we do need you for is A, B, C, and D.
Got you. So there's-
It's my hope, and we, we're going to just keep this lifted up in prayer. But it's my hope that we literally pay for just the things that we need and circumvent all those other things that we do not need.
I got you. Thank you. Um, I will now open it up to the floor for my colleagues. I will start at my far left, I mean, far right, um, Councilwoman Daniels. She left. Okay. Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, and thank you for being here. And thank you for the work that you're doing and the effort that you're putting in. Because it's very important. Uh, lives are at stake and I really appreciate, um, all of the hard work you're doing. Can you help me understand what the call-in is? I didn't really understand the call-in is. Explain that, please.
It wasn't you. It, it wasn't you. Trust me, it wasn't you. Um, I'll be honest with you, I have trouble with some of the vernacular and the language. I would not choose to call it a call-in, because it gives you a different image. But the call-in is when we, uh, like Councilman said, we, we went down to York, it's the identified group members. Like Captain Winder said, the individuals that have been recognized for causing the most problems. We reach out to them and I don't want to trip you up more, it's called a custom notification. Now that makes a little bit more sense. Where we go to someone's house, say, hey, because of your track record and your history of causing problems in the community, we're going to offer you an opportunity to turn your life around. So everything is voluntary. Uh, at that point, for example, when we went down to York, and they're held quarterly, which is important for you to understand as I move forward. So at this, at the one we just witnessed in York, there were seven identified individuals. Now their next quarter, they may have five or 10 or 12. It's whoever's identified at that particular time. So, um, and I think that's important to keep this in perspective. I don't want you to think we're going to be sitting there with 25 to 50 people. Um, but we send custom notifications to identify group members. We bring them in and like Captain Winder was explaining, we have, which I was explaining, the providers. The providers are key. And those are the important things that I was lining up in these first three months. And these are people that have not cost us money, people who are just willing to invest in their time and energy to help make our community safer. And there, after, you know, going through the lengthy speech of explaining what the GBI was to every person I called, it was almost an immediate yes with almost everyone. And again, they're going to bring, whether it's mental health. Um, uh, we have a person who does, uh, clothing, shelter, uh, help with housing. Uh, we identified all those things that predictors that we think they're going to need. Um, and the most important one was the reentry with the jobs. With, because there's some people I, I, I reached out to and they say, hey, do you do reentry? And they said, absolutely. And they said, well, we do. And then they, it was however, comma, pause for effect. They can't have this X, Y, and Z. So then we got those providers who just, no stipulations. You know, completely reentry, no matter what their, um, offense is. Some were telling me, yeah, if they, even if they have a criminal background, if it was something within 90 days, we can't take them. So we try to eliminate anyone with any obstacles, because we want to be able to help these young men. And again, I preface, and women, if they're identified, that particular day of the call-in, to make sure before they leave that building, they know there's a resource to help them, whatever their particular need is. And, uh, like Councilman Jones was there, it's, it's very powerful. And, and I wish, when we get there, I would advise all of you to come or encourage you to all come. It's, it's very powerful moving and it does work, but it's in a community event and it's a educational piece. So I think that's important, because when I got on board, everyone say, hey, you're going to stop gun violence. I said, if I can stop gun violence, I'll be Time Magazine Man of the Year every year. It's just not the, it's a really a community piece and it's an educational piece to let them know that there are opportunities that we're out here trying to help them before we arrest them.
Thank you. You, you, you've answered my question. So it's custom notification where you're actually reaching out to the, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. I have no other questions.
All right. Yeah, I think it's, it's very, um, I, I concur with you. I think you guys should see this. Um, it was very powerful. I left out of there encouraged. Um, but I think to your point as well, what would happen once, once it first happens here and we have the community itself involved, because that's what it's going to take. You guys can't do it on, on your own. Nobody, none of this is, not a one man or a woman job. This is, it's a collective effort. So I think once it's, once it happens, I think a lot of people will get on board and see, uh, some, especially when we can get some outcomes of it. So, yeah, I think it's great if you guys will get an opportunity to witness that. Uh, Vice President Green.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Uh, thank you all for being here tonight. I'm going to start with Miss Houston, um, with the CSA program. Uh, I believe that during the budget hearings, kind of got most of the information that I needed about the program as far as, um, the fourth quarter of 2023. Uh, I will just say that as far as, um, the National Night Out event, it'd be great if you were able to partner with like the communications department or the events department, so that it's not all on you. Uh, because that does obviously take up a large portion of time. Um, and it's supposed to be a City of Harrisburg thing. Um, hosted, sponsored, I shall say, by the police department, but it's supposed to be a city event. Uh, so it'd be great if we could really incorporate our other departments in that as well, to make it a, a full city thing, because it's, it's grown much larger than National Night Out originally was, which was a community event, right? Where you worked with the community groups and they were hosted in, in the individual, um, communities and neighborhoods, uh, to more of a, a city event that brings everyone to one location in the city. So, uh, having other departments in the city really help with that, I think would be a, a great idea and kind of just bring it all together a lot, lot better. So. Um, I'd be willing to help, you know, navigate that if, if you need some help, um, reaching out to some of the departments and see what I can do as well. All right.
I appreciate it. I'll be very honest with you. I had an, um, a planning committee, um, in which I had all, all of the city, uh, entities that are involved, um, with needing to have this event run smoothly. While I appreciate all of their suggestions, um, and efforts, uh, there wasn't anyone who actually took on the responsibility to do, uh, certain things. Uh, um, we did have a couple of people say that they would pay for certain things, which is great. I'll take that. Uh, but when it comes to the actual execution, implementation, um, I did not have any takers on that. So that's the part that makes it, this difficult. We can offer suggestions and great ideas. Um, but if I'm the only person that's executing and making these contacts and on the phone emailing constantly back and forth, da-da-da, it, it's, it becomes my responsibility. So yes, if you can en- um, engage and get people to actually take on some of that responsibility, I am more than gracious, um, in your efforts to do so.
All right. Thanks. Um, let's, let's work on it. Uh, I, I definitely think it's needed, uh, because that's a lot for one person. Um, especially if it's not their full-time job, right? Like if you're the events person, then that's your job. But if, if that's not the sole purpose of your job, it's, it's big. So hopefully we can work that out. Um, Mr. Craig, thank you for being here tonight. Um, if you wouldn't mind just introducing yourself, telling us about you. I think this is your first time before council, so if you could just, you know, talk to us.
I've never been in here before, so you see me looking around. Uh, my name is Angelo Craig. I am from Harrisburg, born and raised. Uh, Hall Manor, um, third grade. My mom actually worked for the school district and retired for the school district. Uh, third grade, she thought it was a good idea for my brother and I to go to Milton Hershey. So I went to Milton Hershey, uh, against my will, I might add, uh, which turned out to be probably the best thing that happened to me. Uh, the short version would be graduated, uh, went to Shippensburg, did undergrad and grad. Uh, and then, like kind of what Captain Winder said, I've been a man of God. I, I've known, uh, Honorable Davis from church. We attended the same church. Um, and I've kind of stayed in my lane. I knew my purpose in life. Uh, my purpose was working with marginalized, um, individuals, whether it be young men and women of color. Has always been my passion and my niche. Uh, so I've done that in terms of whether it was, I taught a class at HAC for men of color, um, where the retention rate before I got there was 9%. And then within one semester for four years, we turned around to 91%. Um, and for those who don't know, I did the life coaching for the Harrisburg football team, uh, when Micah came. So I've always kind of stayed in my lane. And so when this opportunity came across my desk, um, or should I say my office, um, I prayed on it. And I interviewed with Captain Winder and that was in July. And God kept sending me signs. I kept asking for more signs. He kept sending me more signs and, uh, because I wasn't sure if this is what I wanted to do. I, I know I was excited, but that doesn't mean I was where I was supposed to be. And, uh, the doors opened and, um, like Captain Weakland said, uh, it's, they welcomed me with open arms. And I very, I feel very comfortable doing what I've been called and chosen to do. For some reason, it's just my gift, so I never take credit for what I do. Um, I think we all have passions and gifts and talents. I know when we were down in York, uh, Councilman Jones, you know, became an instant celebrity down there because of his history and down there, and for them to see him to turn his life around and become a council member, that kind of reverberated through the room almost immediately. So, you know, we all try to be at the right place at the right time. At least that's what, you know, I pray for daily and just being, you know, doing the work that I've been called to do. Uh, the deputy chief here, again, newly appointed, uh, welcomed me with open arms and, and again, working with Chardonnay daily. I couldn't, and I know people say this all the time and then they leave, they say, I can't stand them people. But I, I really love going to work and working with the group of people. So I said, okay, well, if this is where I'm meant to be, I'll know by the people I have to work with daily. And, uh, I, I know, wanted to see, um, CSAs is over there, so, um, I really, really enjoy getting up, because there are some long days. And again, I think it shows by the amount of work I've done in just a short period of time, how committed I am to this. And again, I just want to let you know that I'm willing to do this, but again, like Councilman said, it's going to take a community effort. But I, I will die literally trying to make the change, but I, I just don't want to be out there by myself and think that I'm the only person who's going to make this work, because I can't do it by myself.
Thank you very much. Um, I appreciate you sharing a little bit about yourself. Um, I appreciate your passion. Uh, thank you for being here with us. Um, I believe we got an extension on this grant until July of 24? June, June of 24. Um, do all the funds have to be expended by June of 2024?
For the, for the grant?
Yes.
Yeah, we gotta spend what we can.
Okay. And, and how do we feel about that at this moment? Do we feel like that's a reasonable goal?
If you're asking me if we're going to spend all that money, I don't think so. Um, but what, you know, my thing is, is let's make sure that we're utilizing the monies for exactly what we need so that we can have the best product moving forward. Um, because we sat down, we talked about timelines and everything, and as you heard, um, Mr. Craig tell you guys, we're springboard into this, into that call-in in, um, the third quarter in September, which means that in the second quarter is where we're going to be doing these, um, what's it called again? No, not the call-in, the, um, going out into the community.
A customer-
Custom notifications. I'm drawing a blank. So many accurate. I should have just kept it. Captain Braille just told you, that's when we're going into the community to go after the ones that are causing the, the, the most grief. Now, the good, the good news was, is that before Mr. Craig got here, the police side of it was still doing their tracking thing. So we were still having, uh, those incident reviews and you, we started seeing the same names popping up over and over and over again. So the blessing is, is that, well, we know exactly who we want to go talk to.
Yep.
We know exactly who we want to go talk to. I was just waiting on a few more pieces to get put in place. And I'll tell you right now, I'm not at 100%, but I'm right around 77, 78%. As far as I'm concerned, we can go.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, and I mean, I, it might be unconventional how we asked for another extension. I mean, now, now that we have the pieces in place, like now that we're moving forward and it's not just like a blank extension, like before it was kind of like, well, we're still looking for somebody. Um, can we get a little more time now that we, we kind of have something a little more concrete and say, this is our timeline? And when we expect to be able to expend the funds, because I, I would, I would assume, but you know what they say about assumptions, but that, um, during that custom notification period, that we would expend more funds during that time, right? And so to not have access to those funds seems like it, it could be, you know, hold, holding it back a little. So anyway, that we could reach out, if we haven't reached out, just with a, more of a concrete timeline, just saying, you know, this is where we're at, this is our, our current time- This is our, our current timeline. If we can get an extension through this point, um, you know, that would greatly impact the success of the grant. I just, I mean, it's worth to try. They, they can always say no, but if not, you know, if we don't ask, the answer is no anyway.
Definitely gonna be no, right?
So that's, that's kind of the only suggestion I have. Um, I look forward to the work that you're doing, um, continuing to do. And I look forward to the results. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Uh, see, um, Lieutenant Governor Davis is screaming for a hundred million gun violence. So I think we'll be all right. President Bowers.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Thanks for being here this evening. Um, I don't have any questions. Thanks for your introduction. Maybe one comment for Director Houston. Uh, you mentioned with the planning committee, I immediately just thought about, um, delegating from your role and establishing clear deadlines for those that have these wonderful ideas and maybe want to assist, but maybe they just need that extra push and a, a timeline to complete it.
Thank you. I guess I struggle with that because a committee, I feel like it, it rarely works when you're voluntold. Uh, to do something you want, I don't feel from my position, if it's not in their job description, to do this type of work, that there's any obligation to do it. And so that's where I struggle with delegating to directors of other departments of what I need them to do for this event, when it's only in my job description. Yeah. So that's where I struggle.
Then I assume that you'll continue to work on it by yourself. I think there has to be some change though. But I don't want to go back and forth, but thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilwoman Ross.
All right. I was helping President Bowers out. Helping each other out. Um, well, first of all, thank you, Director, um, Houston. And thank you, Mr. Craig, for being here, um, tonight. We really appreciate it. Um, I think that we're all looking forward with the GVI grant and all the great things that come from it. Um, I had one quick question, um, though, for the grant side of it. If we don't, if, if we don't spend all the money and don't get an extension, then the money just goes away, right?
Goes back.
Okay. I hope we do get the extension, cause I know we need it. So, but I just wanted to clarify. I don't want to be wrong. Um, Director, um, Houston, I did have one question. Well, first of all, thank you for CSA showing up to all the events that they have. I've been to a few of them, so it's so great to see them there, especially at the, um, trunk and treat, retreat and trunk. I know they say it all different types of ways, but, um, it was just really nice seeing them pass out candy. It was a really great event. So I love how you all were able to partner with Parks and Rec and, um, come out to that event and all the events you all do go to. Um, I know there's one coming up with ice and fire and you all are usually, they're always helping the kids down the ice slide. So, um, thank you. I did want just a quick update on one of your goals. You were mentioning that you wanted to do the mentoring in schools. I was wondering where you were with that.
So, um, we actually have, I will be very, uh, honest in saying that, uh, one of the, the suggestions was incorporating the CSAs into some of the goals. Uh, what would they like to see for themselves, um, and see within their role? And while, um, I am the leader of the ship per se, I do like to get input. Um, and so, um, CSA Myron Brooks, um, has been very, very diligent in trying to, uh, put this program together. Uh, he really, it's his baby. He believes in it. Um, and I support that initiative. I've sat in on meetings. I've read the syllabus. I've read the program, um, the overview. Um, and like I said, I support it. So that's where we are. We have created an overview. Well, he has created an overview, which, um, my captain and myself have looked over, edited, uh, made some, you know, updates, uh, corrections to, uh, so syllabus was created. Uh, we have, had met with, uh, transition coordinators for the Harrisburg School District, uh, Mr. Kamal Pegbrum. And then also, um, Mrs. Sherri Weest. Um, and we are looking for solidified date of when we can actually get started. We're hoping to implement it in the summer of twenty-two-four. Um, that is our goal right now. We're looking also for, to be able to utilize, uh, actual school location. So that is something that, uh, the two transition coordinators said that they would be, um, more, more than helpful in trying to get us to secure, secure at this moment. So that is where, uh, we are in the process with the mentorship program.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I wrote some of that down. So, you know, I hope ma, the next maybe quarterly report, we have some more updates on. I think that'd be a, a great program. I see that you're making some steps. Um, also with National Night Out, I'm willing to help as well. You can delegate me. I don't have to be voluntold, none of that. It's not in my job description, but it's part of the city. So. I think any of us would be willing to help, um, as much as we can. Um, Parks and Rec definitely. I know Director Ross, she is, is never a no for her. It's how can I help? And so I'm sure if you ask her for help or Kevin, they would definitely do so. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Mr. Craig, like I said, it's wonderful to get to meet you. Um, I know you've been, um, working really hard behind the scenes. You just came on in November. I'm sure it's a lot going on, but like you said, born and raised in Harrisburg. So if I don't ask you this one first question, I will be so wrong, but I have to, cause I was told I have to ask you, what is your favorite corner store? I was told I had to ask. There you go. I had to ask you. I was supposed to. So thank you. No, but, um, my next question was, so I'm trying to understand the call-in.
Okay.
Did I say it? Okay. So I know there's been some gun vines over the, it feels like every weekend. And, and that's not to put that on anybody. That's just to say that's, that's the reality every time we turn on the TV. So have you not started to, um, do you not have a list yet of people you, that are targeted? Now, I don't want to say targeted, that are, that, who do have.
Didn't identify.
Identify. Have you identified individuals yet, um, that you would like to intervene? And have you gone to their homes to intervene? Or are we waiting for the call-in and at a certain place? I would.
Captain, you went into that part?
Cause all of that confused me a little bit. So I wanted to see with that.
No problem. I got you. So the first part that you're talking about is on the police side of things. And prior to Mr. Craig getting there.
Right.
We were continuing to have incident reviews.
Right.
The incident reviews are made up of all of these, uh, all of these gun violence crimes that were taking place in the city of Harrisburg. Okay? So when I was telling you that we were having these reviews, we were having these reviews, uh, bi-monthly. So we started seeing a pattern in some of the individuals that were popping up on these, uh, incident reviews. So yes, on the police side, we do have a list that we are willing to, uh, go talk to once that time comes. That's something that we are going to be trying to push in the, uh, second quarter. But prior to even going out there, talking to any of them, he had to set certain things into place.
Okay.
Uh, and make sure, cause when, when we go out to talk to them, you, you have the project manager. You have the police lead, which would be Sergeant Chapman. You have, um, credible messengers, which we had to also lock down and, uh, vet and get solidified and all that sort of stuff. So the GVI is an engine of a whole lot of different moving pieces. And it has to be, it has to all be in place and moving in the same direction before you can just go out there and start having these, these conversations. Cause keep in mind, the individuals that we're going to be talking to, when it comes time for this call-in, which is this grand, uh, grand exercise of having people that are like, okay, I've been listening to you. I'm a voluntarily come in there and I'm going to hear what else you have to say. And having all of the pieces in place, okay? Once all those pieces are in place and once these individuals are like, I'm going to voluntarily come in and listen. It's important to have all of those pieces working for the greater good. That's why I keep, uh, saying about, he had to put together providers. He had to put together the, uh, executive board, I'm not gonna call governors, the executive board. He had to put together the location. He had to put together the credible, uh, messengers. And it's just, it's just a whole bunch of pieces that have to be in place first, before you go out to have these conversations. But you can trust and believe they're not going anywhere. The same individuals whose, whose names that we come across. Unfortunately, we're gonna, we're gonna come across them again and we still have that, that original list.
Okay. Thank you for, that did help me when you explained it a little bit more. I probably in my head do see it just like, go do it now. I would be honest. That's just me, you know what I mean?
Cause that's what, it sounds, it sounds like it makes sense.
Yeah. Like, well, I'm going to their house right now. You done came up seven times on my list. What are you doing? What is going on? Get yourself together. I'm tired of it, but that's me in mommy mode and teacher mode and all of that. So I understand you have to have, um, certain things in place. So, um, and just one last question, cause I don't want to take it up. After you get, um, just I wrap my head around it. And if any residents may have questions too about it, once you identify, let's say you identify one individual. I know it's way more than that. You tell them to come into a certain place and you have all these resources when they come in and then you speak with them. That's how it looks. Okay.
But once we go out there to talk to them, we're going to start immediately talking to them about what it actually is and what's going on. And keep in mind that the individuals that we're going to be talking to, you're, you're on the cusp of going federal.
Okay.
You know, we got, uh, like I said, the district attorney, the US attorney, you're, you're on the cusp of going federal. This is like, this, this is like this last chance olive branch that we're trying to give to you to prevent that from happening by definitely explaining to them the difference between state time and federal time. State time, what, five and a half to ten? Federal time?
Horribly different.
Twenty. Every bit of it.
Yep.
So that's, that's a little bit more of what it is that we're doing.
Okay.
Can I add something to it?
Please.
I like to think, you know, you know, I don't want to assume anyone's age in here. So especially I don't do that. But we grew up, we're scared straight. So, uh, this is definitely a more modernized version where scared straight. And, cause when you watch scared straight, it was like, hey, if you don't do this, you're going to jail. But there was never no, what's the alternative besides going to jail? This has the educational piece where look, instead of going to jail, we're giving the opportunity to turn your life around. Whereas when we grew up, we were scared straight. It was just, they showed the whole prison scene and that was it. So we tell them, okay, that side of the coin, that's easy. But the other side of the point is really the challenging part that really could give them to have hope about themselves. So when we met with Honorable Jones the first time, he goes, what are you envisioning? I said, I know it sounds corny to some degree, but the first thing I do is change their mindset. You gotta give them hope. Cause like Captain Winder says, some of these guys don't think there's really another way.
Yeah.
Than the way they're doing it right now, even though the outcome is not good. So you think of someone's doing this, knowing that the outcome every day could be potentially death, that tells you they really don't have any hope.
I completely agree with you. You do have to let them know they're important. They still matter. Yeah. You've made some choices, but you can turn them around and.
And we got, we got the resources for you to turn them around right here in front of you. You don't have to go looking for them. They're right here.
Yeah.
So we make it as easy as possible. But like you said, when I thought about, I'm like, why don't we just, uh, everyone thinks the same thing and it makes sense in the natural, as they say. But when you realize that when you come and talk to them, you can't say, turn your life around, then they're going to say, well, what can I do? Then you go, uh, uh, let me get back to you. So now we say, well, here's the resources.
Okay.
Cause everyone's going to have different needs, but we know there's going to be some of those needs that they have in common.
Okay. Thank you. And when would your timeline be that you want to get started? Like a rough?
Again, our, our, our expected time, call-in time month is September, I think it's the eighth.
That's right. You did say that. I'm so sorry. I wrote that down. Okay. Thank you so much. That's it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. And I would just say, cause I know the urgency of everybody in the community with the current violence happening. Um, I don't want us to hang our hat on this, wait, like we're waiting for this to happen. So if you can, uh, just give a quick synopsis of something that you guys are doing now to curb some of the things that are happening immediately. So we're not, I know that everybody wants to hurry up and go get these guys there. So could you just give us a little information for the public to hear, please?
So one of the biggest things we're doing is we'll start the saturation details again. That'll be coming up within the next probably a couple of weeks. That we'll, we'll start putting, uh, uh, additional resources out, um, to hit certain areas or target certain areas. See if we can, uh, calm some of that down. It had, it had a great effect last year, uh, the additional officers out on the street. So that's one of the biggest things that we'll be doing, uh, coming up in the near future.
All right. Thank you. So I hope the public's watching, listening. They're not just sitting on their hands. Something's being done. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Um, I, I guess more of just a few statements than questions. Um, it's funny, you had mentioned the scared straight program. Um, the Coalition for Juvenile Justice actually showed that throughout the duration of that program, it actually failed. More kids were actually geared towards a life of crime because they were introduced to enthusiast street. So it just, that comparison, we hope this program will be a much greater initiative. Um, but you're right. I think we do overstand that you have to get a lot going in order for you to start hitting doors. Because that's what the grant writes out, right?
Right.
We feel it's done expeditiously, but we're about three years behind the gun. Um, even when we met with the York team, they actually hit some timeline marks for us and said, if you're really not at this point, at this point, you guys are really behind the gun. And they were really surprised at how far behind we really were, just starting, you know? Um, but I do applaud you, cause it was a position we need, right? So I'm really looking forward to seeing you engage with the team. Um, but you also had made a statement that if you were by yourself, you failed. But your very goal in the program as your position is to not fail. It's to have the right people around you, going to those doors, having the key community members that are trusted. Cause it's going to be hard to go to the door of XYZ when they're like, who are you? The cops. I mean, we already know that because it's something we tried to deter for a long time. You guys have a great career. And when juveniles or youngsters know how great of a career it is, whether it's fire or EMS or police, then hopefully we can encourage them to walk that path. But until then, we could all agree that there's an uphill battle we're fighting with just the trust, right? Just the trust alone. So I would just be cognizant of how I'm throwing different phrases out about that in the community. Cause trust is a huge thing to overcome. Um, but I know you're up for it. A hundred percent. Bread from Harrisburg. You know the battles that we face and the challenges, which is great. It's better than getting someone from, you know, a hundred miles away that just wants to fill the position, right? So I, I applaud you definitely. Um, and any way we can help. I, I know I speak for the body. Like, like we're, we're here to help. Um, I know policy kind of holds us back from certain things we can do, but I'm pretty sure we've all, I've been in the field with almost everybody here. We're not afraid to roll up our sleeves. So, um, I, I, I appreciate, um, your efforts nonetheless. Um, also, uh, Director Houston, you had mentioned, I just, I, I could be a hundred percent incorrect, but I thought running that event was a part of your job description.
It is, but if you don't understand what it takes to run a bit of that size.
I do.
It takes up a large part of my job.
Have you considered planning earlier?
Of course I have, but it's still take that, that event takes, I really should be planning it the day after it ends.
I agree.
You know?
If you acknowledge that issue, why are we not?
Because I have other roles to fill outside of that.
But isn't that still under your job description? Not to be abrasive. I just, cause I remember when Director Lynch ran it. We had helicopters in the sky, like families were, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Like the first year, it was amazing. So I know you guys said it gotten larger, but I feel like the event itself has actually decreased. Cause it was grand the first year out. So I just wanted, you know.
So the event's actually gotten bigger. That's why sort of we go to City Island with it, cause it, it covers more area.
Right. Well, I mean, it's from, were you there at that event I'm referring to? I get was grand. It was massive.
It was. So he had, he brought the PSP helicopter in and, uh, we were down Sunshine Park.
Yep, yep, yep.
Yep. So, um, I was there for the first one.
Cause even the, the City Island thing, it has its own challenges with.
It does.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's, it's grown exponentially in size and the amount of people that we bring in, uh, from the days you were doing, we were doing it in Sunshine Park.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, there's, it, it's a lot of planning, um, a lot of bringing in, uh, coordinating with food vendors. Uh, the entertainment that goes with it. I mean, it's just, it's, it's a huge undertaking. Um, and I mean, we do the best we can, uh, with her. She were, she does an outstanding job.
Yeah.
Um, and coordinating that. Um, but again, it's not her only responsibility and it.
Not only, but one of the.
It's one of the, yeah, but it consumes a massive amount of her time.
Absolutely.
It's going to pull her away from some of the other stuff that she's responsible to do as well.
Okay. Right. And I'm just coming. Okay, right, and I'm just coming from the, I guess, perspective of an event specialist. I led events as large as ten thousand.
Yep.
With a staff of forty-eight under me, I get it, I overstand it, I plan events all throughout the year. Any, any training or any assistance I can give personally, I don't mind. But I just want to encourage our directors and leaders to have a different perspective on it, you know? We can address challenges, but also be proactive in resolutions for those challenges. Yep, that was, that's all, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Nobody else with any questions? I think that concludes my report for uh, the Borough Police and the Community Service Division, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, that was, I think that's.
I see Chief, Chief of Interline is here. I'll wait for you to start your report before I, I definitely have to use the laboratory.
Let's see if we got this. Yeah, ready?
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight I'll be presenting, uh, and I know it's Q three report, but I'm gonna give you a twenty twenty-three rundown of the Fire Bureau. I wanted to combine it all together, uh, so you see what the final numbers are and what, uh, you know, what our runs have looked like, what our training has looked like, and uh, and then give you some, a high level overview of where we are going into twenty twenty-four. So uh, each, each fire state, we have three fire stations in the city. Um, two of the big stations, Station One and Station Two, um, one uptown, one on the hill, have two fire trucks in them. One uh, truck company and one engine company. And then on Allison Hill, we have a second uh, engine company uh, in a separate little station at the Thirteenth and Howard. So I want to give you kind of a, a rundown of uh, the work that uh, these firefighters do day in and day out. Uh, I got it broken down, uh, you'll take a look at response time, and uh, then look at mutual aid that we've done and then fi- uh, end with uh, with training. So uh, this is Tower One, this runs out of Allison Hill, um, it's uh, our busiest rig in the city. The total runs for that piece of fire apparatus for two thousand ninety-nine. I think it's important to look at the number of runs, um, and wh- why are fire trucks, you know, they're out there all the time? And, and uh, the amount of time put in responding to those residents, uh, both here in Harrisburg and as you can see, uh, across central Pennsylvania, um, with sixty-nine uh, of those two thousand ninety-nine runs uh, going down to Steelton, which is one of our biggest mutual aid uh, receivers in uh, for the Fire Bureau. Next up is Ladder Two Uptown, uh, and you know, I added a couple of action shots here unfortunately. Uh, obviously we have the Broad Street Market there, uh, that's in their first due. Uh, slightly less than Tower One with eighteen hundred and two responses. Uh, and again, their mutual aid, uh, the majority of them is to East Pensbury Township just across the bridge. Squad Eight is our uh, Hill Engine Company, Thirteenth and Howard Streets, um, the busiest engine we have. It's also the rescue company, so any accidents, wind entrapment, uh, things like that, any rescue type calls. This is the first rig that goes on those, and they took in twenty-two hundred and fifty runs. And they don't do as much mutual aid just because of the, the makeup of the rig. Now, we did start uh, towards the end of the year, Swat Our Township lost their uh, en- their rescue to an accident. They were actually in an accident, it was placed out of service. So we were covering for them uh, pretty significantly. You see their uh, main uh, res- place where we responded to for mutual aid was Swat Our Township with eighty-eight runs. Um, so overall, not a huge number, um, but when you look at it collectively, we are providing a lot outside the city uh, through mutual aid. Uh, and we'll look at the, the numbers of them coming in as well when we have first and second alarm building fires. Well, and to the engine companies, Wagon Four, which operates out of Allison Hill, uh, at Sixteenth and State Streets, fourteen hundred and forty runs, uh, again, they run tandem down to Steelton. Uh, and Penbrook obviously being just over the border, um, we get out there quite a bit. One of the things that we did do, uh, when you look at these numbers for mutual aid, uh, in order to keep our firefighters protected, uh, we asked that um, whenever a truck goes, another, a tower truck, an engine goes along with them, so that we know that we have enough of people to protect our folks. Because sometimes when we get there, there's nobody else there, uh, quite frankly. So um, that, that's some of the things uh, from a mutual aid standpoint that we look at. And then Wagon Three Uptown, uh, their response area is a lot smaller uptown, uh, and when you look at the development uptown, we believe and we're projecting um, with, with the new housing, uh, apartment buildings and things like that going in uptown, that these numbers are gonna start to increase. Um, and they only had nine hundred and nineteen runs uh, for the year, and they do very little mutual aid. We're actually looking at maybe balancing the mutual aid out, um, and using Wagon Three as a mutual aid rig as opposed to maybe one of the other rigs, uh, to balance that uh, that, that whole mutual aid scheme out, um, so that we're not running everybody else ragged, if you will. So uh, call overview, um, we had a total of uh, three thousand two hundred and eighty-eight calls, uh, both city and mutual aid. Uh, our biggest, uh, if you look at it from a percentage standpoint, is rescue and EMS. So what does that mean, uh, because we don't have an ambulance in the city that we staff as, as a fire department? So those rescue and EMS calls are calls where we're going out, um, for uh, folks in cardiac arrest, uh, any type of class one uh, emergency response, such as a heart attack, uh, breathing issues where the ambulance is two di- two uh, uh, mutual aid calls away. In other words, would be a third due mutual aid call into the city uh, for EMS. Uh, and then also in those rescue calls are those vehicle accidents we run. And obviously I'm talking with the police, uh, I'm, I'm sure you're aware, tons of vehicle accidents. Uh, interestingly enough, one of the uh, lowest percentages of calls that we have are actual fires, which is a good thing for both our firefighters and our residents. Um, we're still tackling the false alarm and false call issues. Uh, Mike Hughes's office has done a phenomenal job over the last two years of processing and sending out invoices for those habitual offenders. Um, and so the false, the false alarm, false call, there's a caveat to that. Um, in those is also unattended cooking calls. And we, we code it, it's called a two fifty-one, it's excessive heat scorch and burns with no ignition. Um, so that's where somebody burns food. So it's not technically a false call, but in the uh, national incident uh, reporting system, that's where it unfortunately falls to. So um, those calls, when we break those out and start looking at the different um, high-rise buildings that we deal with, uh, with our elderly population, so whether that's Benet Brit or Morrison Towers or Jackson Towers, uh, those, those habitual places where we have that uh, unattended cooking, uh, and it might just simply be smoke from cooking, right? They, they may have just been cooking, then turned the fan on, and it just happens. Um, so we're, we're uh, looking at that, uh, in, in my report. We did receive a five thousand dollar grant from Norfolk Southern Corporation, and we're going to be putting together some fire safety uh, packets to go to our uh, elderly high-rises. And when I say packets, I'm not talking about paper, I'm talking about physical things that will help. Uh, and one of the things we're, we're looking at doing is giving them kitchen timers, um, that will uh, you put something on the stove, set the timer, right, and it's, it, it'll be a, you know, fancy timer with a Fire Bureau logo or something like that on it. Um, and, you know, set that thing, and let's analyze that over the next year and see if we decrease uh, false alarms, unattended cooking in a particular apartment building. So that's one of the things that we're looking at uh, going into twenty twenty-four. Severe weather, national, uh, natural disasters. The good news is, um, we did have a spike in those earlier this year with the snowstorm that came through. Um, and you know, obviously part of our emergency management function is any flooding, uh, both uh, urban and river flooding. And we've been very fortunate with little to no flooding, though we did blow the forecast for the Farm Show and we had some minor flooding uh, on Wednesday night at Farm Show, which had displaced uh, a, a couple of hundred cars for, uh, for the evening, so. Moving on to our incidents, uh, so in the city, uh, we had two thousand nine hundred and twenty incidents with an average response time, and this is for emergency response. In other words, lights and siren going to the scene of four minutes and thirty-seven seconds. So from the time that we're dispatched till we arrive on scene, um, the average response time is four minutes thirty-seven seconds. There are outliers in the city where we look at, uh, especially up on industrial roads, some of the big warehouses, uh, as we get up there, those numbers increase. As we look at the south side, which is something that we're really looking at, um, from a station placement and maybe a mutual station location with another municipality, we'd be looking at south side. So Hall Manor and uh, areas down there where it's kind of remote from our central Allison Hill. Though the population center in Allison Hill is around that State Street to uh, Berry Hill Street corridor, uh, we are missing uh, some of those, those calls in that five minute or less response time that we're looking for on the south side of Allison Hill. So um, those are some of the statistics that we're starting to really dig into, um, with some of this better uh, record keeping that we have due to some upgrades at Dolphin County Communications. Um, so before, all these numbers had to be manu- manually entered off of a, uh, off the computer, back into the computer. Uh, this is all now being auto-populated, um, from our dispatcher records in Dolphin County, right into our records management system. So we're able to get a lot better, uh, more detailed look at what it's actually taking us to get to calls. Um, so looking at, uh, you know, where the, where the call staggered at, when you look at uh, one four one five, which is South Allison Hill and South Harrisburg, um, that's the majority of the runs there, about a thousand runs. Uh, downtown here, about six hundred and thirty. Uh, a majority of those runs, uh, that, that we're talking about, again, are those high-rises that we're dealing with on, um, you know, whether Morrison Towers, uh, places like that. Uh, and then uh, very few on the interstate, which is a good thing for us. Um, that is probably the worst place, um, and the most dangerous place, quite frankly, for our firefighters uh, to be. Uh, and then uh, we continue to see uh, river incidents, um, and you know, I'm proud of the, the work that we've been able to put into the river and uh, affectuating rescues uh, out there, so. And mutual aid, again, uh, three hundred and sixty-eight runs outside the city, just a couple of photos, uh, again, from uh, some of the work that we do out there. Uh, the leader, uh, last year, and that was again due to that uh, rescue company being out of service with Swat Our Township, uh, closely followed by uh, Steelton Borough. Um, and, and, and just as a reminder, all these folks are also giving us mutual aid back into the city of Harrisburg when we have fires. Uh, and uh, more importantly, um, they're all volunteers. So um, there, there isn't a guarantee that they're gonna get response. Uh, and that therefore that mutual aid that we're providing uh, i- is an extra layer of protection uh, for those folks. Looking at training, we, uh, this was our first full year with a deputy chief of training. Uh, we were able to log eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-six hours of training. Um, so that includes uh, everything from apprentice training, the company drills that they're doing, to all kinds of other great things, uh, that we've been able to put in place uh, over this last, uh, over this last year that is gonna continue to build into twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-four and into twenty twenty-five. With the goal that once uh, ISO comes in to look at our uh, insurance rating in twenty twenty-five, that we're gonna be able to lower that rating, which will have a direct, uh, the direct causation of that will be lower insurance rates for not only our residents, but also, more importantly, the big, the big dollars are the uh, business and commercial properties, um, that see the biggest drops in those. Um, so we're excited to see what that's gonna be uh, next year. And just a real quick overview of some of the uh, trainings that we've done, uh, to stay proficient. Um, and you know, uh, you know, from EMS hazmat, roof operations, building familiarization, familiarization, actually going out into the community, um, we're gonna, uh, we're starting another program, um, to work with codes on identification of those derelict buildings that are out there that are falling down, um, to get our marking system on it, so that we're not hurting killing firefighters inside those buildings. But more importantly, uh, being able to keep a, a catalog of those buildings that are the worst of the worst, um, so that we're aware of those at dispatch as opposed to when we're pulling up in front of them. And just a, a few photos here of uh, some of the training that we've done, the, the technical stuff that is uh, you know, uh, not your everyday thing. So from high angle rescue to trench rescue, that trench rescue drill was actually held in conjunction with uh, Capital Region Water, uh, their folks are working trenches a lot, and so that was a great opportunity we had with them to dig a T-trench at their facility up on Pine Drive and spend the day up there with uh, about forty or fifty uh, of our folks and their folks, uh, really looking at trenches and the dangers of uh, trench rescue and being in those trenches when they're unsecured. And one of the other things, um, and it's probably tough to make out on the water rescue, uh, we, we've partnered with uh, Harrisburg International Airport. And uh, so I, I have the fortunate opportunity to be part of the Board of Directors of the Airport Authority. And uh, we've really uh, garnered a relationship with their fire department, it kind of sits on an island down there. And so we're, we're working together with them to try and build that relationship for training. We've done uh, two or three technical rescue trainings, and we have two more scheduled for this year that are gonna be in conjunction with them, so it's a cost sharing. Uh, and both Harrisburg Fire and uh, Harrisburg International Airport Fire Department are uh, you know, receiving that training at a lower cost than it would be if we were to do it individually, so. That concludes the slide that I wanted to, to show you. Uh, just a couple of uh, real quick uh, outlook. We ended the year with ninety-six firefighters and fire officers, uh, and one civilian uh, assistant. However, uh, we did have several uh, resignations and uh, retirement. So we had a firefighter, actually two firefighters resigned the first couple of weeks of January. One went to be in the police academy, the other resigned for personal reasons. Uh, and then we have uh, three firefighters that retired. Cedric Gates retired after thirty-four years of service on January sixth. Firefighter Will Turner retired on January ninth after twenty years of service. And Captain Byron Warner is retiring this week, uh, after thirty-four years of service. And we did just receive two additional, um, uh, intense to retire, um, by mid-year. So uh, we anticipate that we're gonna lose uh, two more additional, um, twenty-plus year veterans, um, that are ready to hang up the helmet. So we do have a class that starts Monday, uh, at the Fire Academy, uh, of six. We were, we originally had eight, um, unfortunately, two of them were uh, uh, removed through the civil service process uh, for issues in their background. Uh, so we, we only have six coming out. Um, we will hire, um, and look at hiring again next spring. Uh, it just fits our training program, it's a hire only in the spring. Did want to highlight, I did give you a, a whole book, and I know it doesn't follow your, uh, it doesn't follow necessarily your, uh, uh, it, it is a book, right? A hundred and, a hundred and sixty-eight pages? Uh, I, I do have a copyright on it. And actually I did highlight, uh, I just wanted to highlight those uh, excessive heat scorch burn, uh, when we look at those false alarm numbers. burn, when we look at those false alarm numbers, to not get alarmed, no pun intended, on that large number of false alarms, that we do have a significant number of those that are cooking-related calls. And I guess the good news is there, when we code that as an excessive heat, scorch, burns, no ignition, that means there wasn't a fire, we were alerted to it, and somebody took action before it became a fire, which is what the fire alarm system is supposed to do. So I will leave it at that, because I know we are running late tonight. If there's any questions, obviously, I'm happy to entertain them.
I will just say that, thank you again for this very detailed presentation, report, but if you can, put me in touch with your graphics team. Really good job with that, though.
That's a team of one, that was me.
Okay. Great job, great job. But I would just say again, thank you, man. I had an opportunity, there was no loss of life, but I actually got to see you in action, continue to do the good work, and I just learned a lot more about fire. I just thought you guys just did that, but you do a whole lot more, and I just commend you on the work that you're doing. I hear those signs going off constantly in the community. I'm rated where I think was 1.5, I'm on 16th Street, so I hear it a lot coming through there. So just keep up the good work, and I don't have any questions. I'll pass it on to my colleagues, to my media right, Councilman Rodriguez.
And Councilman Jones, before you, and I appreciate you coming after that call. I think you got to see a lot that day. Number one, we were dealing with a significant power outage to the city that was nearly catastrophic, and luckily, we got some inside information from PP&L. Their numbers were, they were going to be out of power for 24-plus hours, and the linemen that were there said, listen, we're telling you this is going to be fixed in about 20 minutes.
Right.
And they were right, which was a good thing for everybody on Allison Hill. But you did get to see, as Councilman Rodriguez did as well, what that looks like and the, sometimes the, if I dare, hellish conditions that our guys have to deal with day in and day out in some of these buildings. So we appreciate that.
Yeah, it was very unfortunate for that resident as well. Tried to do what I could to help, but I see you removed the meters for the electrical panels, right? You did that?
No, PP&L would do that.
Oh, okay. But they, yeah, they took it out, and I had someone go over and check out, assess what she could do to far as getting that electric back on, and the whole house needs to be rewired. Once they pull those meters, it's pretty much.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think her insurance lapsed, and which we see all too often in the city.
Yep. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Chief Ederline, thank you as always. I mean, what you guys are able to deliver and do on a consistent basis is nothing short of amazing, from your river rescues on to just training. I actually, when I first got elected, went through one of the trainings. We won, by the way.
That's right, that's right, that's right.
But, I mean, I've always admired and really just was at awe at everything you and the team done. I actually had the privilege to be in a training with you guys at the 13th Street Department, and when that alarm went off, to feel the energy of the guys just get up, it didn't, nothing else mattered but the urgency of who they had to help. And that's a different feeling in itself, like, the meal that was just in front of them didn't matter, the juice, like, nothing, like, it was, I hear this alarm.
When it's time, it's time, right?
It's time, and to see that is amazing. Are you currently?
And I'm not ignoring you while you talk, I just wanted to put up, one thing that I think we neglected to do, and I wanted to do this while you guys asked questions to talk, is I want to show you our firefighters at work and some of the guys, because I think so often, we see it on TV, we might see it a little bit on the internet, but as you talk and ask questions, I'm just going to, hopefully this works and piece through here.
Well, I only have a brief one. Are you currently awaiting any apparatus or equipment or everything we've ordered pretty much come in at this point?
We have two rigs that are currently being built in Appleton, Wisconsin, and I did neglect, I was going to put those build reports from Friday in there for you guys, and I didn't. But as we get those build reports, I'll send them over to get that distributed to you. See, I think it's actually a cool thing to see how they're built and everything. So we do have two coming, they'll be here Q2.
Awesome. And then I think the Motorola order for the Walkies, did that ever come in, did those ever come?
They did, and we just got them back from programming last week.
Awesome. So those were paid for, taken care of?
Yep, everything taken care of.
All right, thank you. No further questions?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Councilman Ross, I'm a councilwoman, Ross, I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you for being here, Director and Chief Ederline. I don't have any questions, just thank you for everything that you and your department does for the city, and I know you're going to continue to do a great job, and just thank you for your thorough report as well.
You're welcome.
President Daniels? I mean, I apologize, I apologize, I'm tired. Be here long.
I understand.
I apologize, Madam President Bowers.
Thank you. Good evening, Chief Ederline, I do not have any questions related to the fourth quarter of 2023. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get this right, Vice President Green.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I don't have any questions for you, thank you as always for all that you do. Thank you for the thorough report, it's always, it covers everything, so I never have any questions, because it's all there, so I appreciate it, thank you.
We like transparency, and that's why I give you the budget reports, so you can see what we're actually doing.
Yes, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, thank you, Chief Ederline. I'm just as excited as my colleagues. I noticed at the beginning of your report, there were no fire deaths in 2023, which is amazing, because normally during the winter months, I hear about fire deaths due to people not having smoke alarms in their homes, so that was really exciting to hear. I also want to say that I really appreciate, and I want to highlight the work that the volunteers, the mutual aids do. Just can't say enough about them. It takes a lot of dedication and a heart of passion to want to get out there and save lives and work free of charge, so.
It is definitely a calling.
It has to be.
It's not for the fainting hearts, that's for sure.
The other, well, one question I have is, you mentioned something about the insurance rates. Can you tell me what insurance rates were you referring to? You mentioned that would decrease for residents.
Right, so that would be the fire insurance rating. So ISO, which is the Insurance Services Office, does a review every five years of every fire department across the country. And in fact, there was just a fire department in Western Pennsylvania that, for the last two years, has refused to comply with this inspection, and everybody in the town now is losing their fire insurance. So it's that important. And so right now, we are a three. There's a rating scale of 1 to 10, 10 being a rural area with no fire hydrants out of a travel distance for any viable fire and life safety activity, down to a 1, which is the cream of the crop, the best of the best fire departments. And right now, we sit at a 3. When, back, if you go back to 2014, when we first took over, we were a 4, and very quickly had to put some things into play to get us back down to that 3 so that the insurance rates of the city were not affected. Our hope and goal, and we believe wholeheartedly with just a little bit that we've invested already, that we'll be able to be at that 2, and we want to identify and look and see what it would actually be, what more investment would it be to get to that rating of an ISO 1, which is a huge accomplishment for any fire department, and what the, what the investment would be from the city standpoint, so using taxpayer dollars to, if that's additional staffing, an additional engine company, an additional, what does that look like? And does that offset, is that offset by the significant savings that the property owners would see on their fire insurance?
Okay, thank you for that explanation. And then finally, I wanted to ask if your department has, will be working with the dam and implementing those, what are they called, buoys?
The buoys, yes, yes. So we, every year, we are charged with putting those buoys in, and we're actually working right now with PennDOT and the Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission as part of the 83 bridge construction, as well as the Market Street reconstruction, Market Street Bridge reconstruction. We are looking to fund and put in permanent buoys that would be permanently attached to the bottom of the riverbed. PennDOT, this spring will be going out, they have a contractor that's going to do the core samples force of the riverbed to figure out how deep the bedrock is. In other words, how deep does the contractor have to drill to attach the chain and the cement to keep those buoys in place? And then the buoys will be, quite frankly, they're bigger than what your desks are up there, they're immense buoys, so it'll give us a nice marking, and they're also going to have handles on them, because the river's so, we're a mile wide at the Dock Street Dam, so north of that, adding those handles will give somebody that's in a canoe the ability, you wouldn't have the power to traverse the river if you're already worn out, to grab onto a buoy until we were able to come out and rescue you. So that's some of the things that we're looking at, both above and below the dam, is, again, in conjunction with PennDOT and Pennsylvania Fish and Boat Commission.
Thank you. I was going to ask about the timeline, and you explained that this spring, they're going to?
Yeah, so this spring, work should start, I would be hopeful that by the end of the year, we'd be able to install those buoys, but I'm being hopeful with that.
Thank you very much, I don't have any other questions.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Your presentation. That will conclude the report from the Borough Fire. How are you doing this evening, you hanging in there with us?
We are.
All right.
Good evening, City Council members.
Good evening.
I am Ann Montgomery, Code Administrator for the Codes Department, City of Harrisburg. On the first slide is a description of our department. As you read through the page, you'll see the department has many competing responsibilities, the issuance of licenses, permits, and inspections are a daily occurrence. Of special note is our interaction with the public, the forms and complaints and violations. In summary, our department focuses on the responsibilities to make sure the buildings are safe for the occupants and the public. The next page on the quarterly summary. We've updated our code officers' job descriptions and grading to provide a better qualified officer in a more timely manner. It was taking 15 years for, to get, for the code officers to get their required certifications, it's now down to five years. Our first appeals board was held last quarter, it was the first in my tenure, and the decision from the board was to uphold the condemnation placard. The remainder of this page is a snapshot of our work for the fourth quarter. The annual goals. On the next slide, thank you. The annual goals, the goal of 21 demolitions was met and surpassed due to the diligence of our in-house demo team and the contractors who performed the tasks. Munis preparation is ongoing, and the last quarter, we focused on background data that will impact the end result, specifically our condemnation list that will be incorporated in with the new software. On the next slide is the year-to-date spending. If you have any questions on that, can ask me, feel free. And on the next slide, we have the special projects and grants. We've applied for a block grant, that would be for $150,000 if awarded. The fire chief actually spoke to that, along with identifying the, sorry, along with identifying the condemned buildings, it would also go towards the education and also software for the new system. As stated before, Munis conversion occupies some of our time. We're now being trained, and the percent will go up as we get closer to the go-live Another project would be converting all our historical data from paper to digital format. On the next slide, the department vacancies. We are interviewing currently for one code officer and also for one administrative assistant, so we have two vacant positions right now. And on the next slide, community engagement. We've made changes to our portion of the Harrisburg website, more is scheduled as we get closer to Munis on the go-live date. The intent is to streamline our processes while ensuring customer satisfaction and ease of use. We've also converted our current forms into a Spanish version. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions.
Great job. I would just simply say, again, I went through this and looked at a lot of the things that you're doing, also the conversation you and I had, but I also wanted to take an opportunity for you to share with our constituents, with the community, the limitations of codes, because as you're aware, a lot of complaints come to codes, it's codes is not doing this, codes is not doing, they don't really understand the limitations, like, when you, once you issue, once you do your part as issuing a citation, that's pretty much the limits of, so can you expand on that?
Yeah, so we, that is the furthest we can go, is to write a citation, and then we go to court, and we testify on, so then it's up to the DJ on their decision, whether they find them guilty or find them for that guilty, or they sometimes will extend the decision and see if they can, you know, bring it into compliance, so.
Yeah, that's good, because, you know, again, a lot of the community members, well, what's codes doing, they really don't understand how it actually works, and I just wanted to give our listeners and viewers an opportunity to understand that there are limitations in each department, for that matter. So, thank you. I don't have any further questions, but I'll go to my far-right, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Jones, thank you for being here, it's nice to officially meet you, I've been trying to meet you.
I know, they told me today, I missed you a couple of different times.
I missed you, but thank you for your report, and I'll make time to come in to speak with you. I don't have any questions.
Be glad to meet you.
Vice President Green?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I don't have any questions for you, I think everything that I would have asked was covered, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President Bowers?
Thank you, good evening, I don't have any questions regarding the report, thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you so much, Councilman Jones. Good evening, Director Montgomery, thank you for being here, and thank you for your thorough report. Just one quick clarification, with the open vacancies, I know you still have, I believe you said, the administrative assistant, that's still open?
Administrative assistant one.
Administrative assistant one, yes, and I know that was open still in budget season, I think, still, well, at least it was on the budget papers. So I hope you're able to fill it soon, because it's on Indeed, right?
Yeah, we had somebody lined up, and she declined, and it would have been perfect.
I'm sorry, that does happen sometimes. Oh, so that's hard, I'm sorry. And then, so then the, I wanted the correct name of the other position that was open.
Code officer.
The code officer, okay, because when I'm in the community, I try to say what we have open.
Yes.
And that would be on Indeed, too, would they go through the Harrisburg website, or just go to Indeed?
Either one, they should find it on Indeed or at the Harrisburg website.
Okay, I will definitely be a champion and try to. Okay, I will definitely be a champion and try to get somebody in there. I'll help out. You're welcome and thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
No questions for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone here for the health office? Yeah, I know, man. How are you this evening?
I'm fine. How are you doing?
Good, good.
Now, right, health officer. And I'll kind of make it quick due to the length of the hour, so I appreciate the opportunity. Our description is health office. Basically, I'm here and my team is here to make sure that, you know, our food establishments are doing everything they can to stay not only legal, but in the eyes of the public are providing safe, edible, good food for the public. So my position is a compliance-type position, so there are guidelines that I go by. The FDA food code is number one, but we do have a state food code as well. So generally, I use those as any references if there is a general inspections or if in fact there is a complaint. So there is documentation and reference materials that would be used if in fact there is a challenge. So again, you can see here, just interacting with the local business, working with business development and other entities within the city of Harrisburg to try to drive participation in education and food safety. We do have a team of three people. And Tony Russo is a contract inspector. And John Nelson is the social media part-time inspector as well and myself. So we try to coordinate activities throughout the city. Next one, we do healthy Harrisburg outreach as well. So the quarterly summary, I have some additional numbers for you. I was unable to get into the database and further break down these numbers until this evening. It's actually what I was doing earlier back there. But if we look at the quarterly summary, we had annual and general inspections. There was 32 of those. Out of the 32, I did 15. Anthony Russo did seven and John did 10. John generally does low-risk inspections. So he'll do stores that have like packaged goods only because he's not a certified inspector. Although Tony Russo and myself are, Mr. Nelson is not. So he does low-level inspections. New business inspections, there were six, and I basically do all of the new business inspections along with Matt McKinley, who is a code enforcement officer. Because most of the time with new business, there's been some level of construction or some physical change to the facility. So he comes and backs me up on anything that is related to any structural changes. Joint inspections, again, same thing with Matt. Generally, it is a business that is, you know, starting out or taking over a result of a sale perhaps, you know, and they're just revamping things. We try to make sure that everything they're doing is in compliance with both the code, fire, and health. Progressive inspections and follow-ups, they're generally, Tony's did a great job with those. Generally, they are your complaints kind of or follow-ups from some of the customers that tend to have, I guess, repeated issues. So generally, it would be Tony or myself. He has a great amount of experience with dealing with recidivism for some of these restaurants and stores. So I lean on him heavily with that because he's very good at it. Consultations are generally via the phone or they might be plan site inspections or plan reviews. And generally, I will do that. There was about four of those due to some, you know, expansions at like Family Dollar and different places. They would send the plans, code would look at the plans, and I would probably look at the food sections, refrigeration, and so forth within those plans. Public complaints, we've been getting a lot of complaints from satellite areas so that are not necessarily in our jurisdiction. There's been a real uptick in that. So I'm really trying to work with the Department of Ag and some of the other resources and other inspectors in different areas to kind of streamline that process because they're kind of coming into Harrisburg as like an umbrella. If they don't know where this place is, it comes in my inbox, you know? So I spend a little bit of time trying to form out where this place is and who owns it and which rep is going to deal with it and all that. So we're really trying to work and I think in the last report, I probably spoke to the revamp of the database. So it's going on. It is a statewide database. It's coming along, you know? But they still are going to be working with it. As a matter of fact, there's a meeting I'll be attending tomorrow that they'll be talking about some of the changes over at the farm show. Special events, generally, those are your Kaponas, Fire and Ice, all those types of things, all those food trucks. Sometimes there are duplicates. They've already been inspected because they go to numerous events throughout the year. And sometimes they're new people. It just depends, you know, on where they are. So generally, our annual goals, if you look at that next slide. Again, you know, we're working to try to increase the number of inspections, doing them in a more timely fashion. There's actually something called the retail standards and there's a standard called number two. There's actually nine standards in total. I know I've talked about the standards quite a few times. But standard number two is basically a trained regulatory staff. And what that means is that the inspections are uniformly done. You know, we try, everyone throws in their own personality. So you can't necessarily make people robots, but there are guidelines. And we use the inspection forms to try to keep people on track and make sure that we're treating everyone fairly, that no one's feeling like we're picking on them or feeling undue pressure or even providing assistance and guidelines. If there's something they need to do that they clearly can't afford or is clearly out of their realm, you know, we try to provide, you know, one-off information for those people if necessary. The adoption of the food code 2017, we're actually up to 2022, but we are only at 2017 here in the state of Pennsylvania. There's been a lot of interest from local healthcare providers. I've developed quite a relationship with Penn State Health and Hershey. They are very interested. Obviously, UPMC is a very big stronghold here in Harrisburg. But Penn State has expressed an interest in becoming much more active in Harrisburg. And I've been working with the Cancer Institute to kind of give them feedback on our population type and ways and methodologies of reaching out to the urban community. That's an area that, you know, they want to focus on moving forward. And they have asked me if I would be of assistance in doing that and I would be more than happy to do that. And while gaining additional information from them, they want to talk about things like clinical trials, disease management, cancer research. You know, they're really getting heavy into providing, you know, additional data, if you will, for things such as clinical trials, such as cancer treatment algorithms and so forth. So they really need to reach out to our residents so that when these researches being done and these methodologies and protocols and all that stuff are being developed, that they are including minorities, they are including the elderly, that they are including women, you know, and so forth. So this is a big thing for them and hopefully I'll have some more information as time goes on about how Harrisburg is helping in that effort. Getting on to additional goals, we can just go to the next one because fiscal management was the last bullet on this one. So I'm going to go to the grant updates. As you all know, I've been successful in getting some grants. So we are still working on the three-year grant, which is ending this year. The $213,000 plus the training dollars and some other things. Now, I don't know if they're going to be extending it. There's been some conversation about that. So hopefully, they will extend it and give us more time to spend those funds. They did open up the grant window for new applicants in December. I did apply. The way the grant process is working out through the FDA at this point is that anything that's training-related is a separate application. So I had to do a separate application for training dollars. And because I had got a substantial amount with the other grant, when I put in the application, the maximum amount was 7,500, but I was awarded, as you can see, 5625. So I felt good about that. I did apply also for a mentorship grant, which was $14,000, which was initially in my strategic plan, but apparently, they don't have enough mentors to go around. So I did not get the additional $14,000. Okay, so special projects, okay. So special projects right now, that's the next slide. So again, the mentor grant was what I talked about. But there are additional funds looking at for hardware and software. And if in fact I'm successful in hiring the person I'm looking for, that person would be able to get the materials, all the inspection materials, also a laptop, you know, and uniforms and so forth. So hopefully, we will have the dollars to take care of a new person. And another special project that's not listed on there, yeah, the retail standard two is there. One of the things that will be part of my meeting tomorrow is one of the other jurisdictions is doing a survey. They're using like Survey Monkey. And what they're doing is they are surveying the different entities in their jurisdiction just to say what's happening, you know, how are things going, what are your challenges, da-da-da. So I've asked John Nelson to look into, I think it's Survey Monkey and it's another one that we may be rolling out, you know, just to get a feel. Because we did it like impromptu right after COVID and just to see how people are doing now that COVID is over, I guess for lack of a better term. And just see how things have changed since COVID has ended. The vacancy update, again, just spoke about that today. I do have the commissioner's approval to move forward. We're getting another officer and we're just putting together the... Job description has been sent to HR. And it's just a matter of getting that put out in the public domain. So anyone who is interested, as soon as that goes out in the public domain, I'll definitely let you all know. Just, you know, ironing out all the final details and so forth as far as that position would be. It would be a part-time position. It's a grant-funded position. And, you know, we'll see where it goes. I do have, I think I have a candidate, but I'm not exactly sure because it's been a little while since we had talked about. We talked about bringing him on late last year. And I don't know how we move, how we are moving forward, but he is, there was one person who was interested. So I'm hoping that we can get all this ironed out and then I can start interviewing next month and get somebody in by mid-April. Community engagement. Basically, doing a couple of things that have been in the works. We got some updates on the license application. There were some edits online that needed to be done so that people could actually fill them out online successfully without any glitches. The quarterly newsletter is back and up and going. So that continues to be printed and disseminated. People now have, it's expanded its distribution a little bit because I've gotten requests from community centers, you know, Heinz, Manneker, and Y and all. They want theirs, they want some there as well. Because initially, I had just been putting them out to the professional community restaurants. But now I increased the run, so now I get an extra 300 copies and they go to different community entities. The, let's see, digital format. So our communications director is now putting a digital version on the Harrisburg newsletter. So I sent that to him and I guess he publishes it as he sees fit. And we do have food safety posters that I've been putting in with and giving to the inspectors to, in different languages, to deal with whatever, you know, situation may be. Their courtesy of the FDA and the Department of Ag joint effort. So they had a translator come in and these posters and flyers are available. And I've printed up several in different languages. I think it's Korean, Spanish, Japanese, Chinese. I'm drawing a blank, but it's like, there's others as well. I just can't remember what they all are. But there's, it pretty much covers the gamut of our local area anyway. So those are available and, you know, made available upon request or if necessary, as part of a inspection process. We are doing more of the food safety nutritional sessions. I'm working right now with the Camp Curtain United. They had an award from Giant Foods, so they were looking to try to do some things with that. So we're just trying to work through some of those, you know, decisions and so forth for the spring. And again, just to continue to do, you know, community engagements and food trucks and stuff like that at all the different events. And as I mentioned earlier, doing more engagement in regards to health and wellness, chronic disease management, et cetera. So hopefully partnering more with Hershey, with UPMC, with Beacon Health, you know, and some of the healthcare outlets that are here. So we kind of all know each other, but I think at this point, you know, it could be much more that I'm hoping I will be able to do with, you know, more hands doing inspection work. So any questions?
No, no, I don't have any questions at this time. But I do, I will say to you as well that this work is much needed in our community to make sure that things are flowing accordingly with these businesses, especially when it comes to us eating. So I think your role is very important in our community. And I don't have any other questions, but I will extend it to my colleagues. And again, I will go to my immediate right for Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Thank you, Director Wright, for joining us. I have no questions. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you. I'm Councilman Jones. Good evening to you, Mrs. Wright. Thank you for being here and all the work that you do, and I don't have any questions.
Thank you. President, Madam President Bowers?
Thank you. Good evening. I don't have any questions regarding your report.
Vice President Green?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Thank you, Ms. Noah, for being here. I don't have any questions this evening. Thank you.
And Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Jones. Good evening, Director Wright. Thank you for being here. Thank you for a thorough report. I don't have any questions, but I will make time to meet with you. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I do have a request. If anyone has any particular, especially in regards to, you know, health and disease states and management or whatever, if you have any particular thing that you'd like to see addressed, I'd like to know because this is kind of a new expansion area and I'd love to kind of get feedback on what's important. I mean, we all know the general ones, the cancer and, you know, heart disease and blood pressure and all. But, you know, anything that is of interest or you'd like to see me address in our community, please let me know.
Yes.
We'll keep that in mind.
Councilman Jones, I just, since she did mention that, I would like to see initiatives surrounding the COVID-19. We know that people with pre-existing conditions were the ones who were primarily dying. So I'd like to see information out in our community that can address some of those conditions and help our citizens to be more aware of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Noted. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So Mr. Truesdale, we're moving on to resolutions. Resolution 10, 2024, please read it into the record.
Resolution 10, 2024. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with WCA Public Safety Assessments for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessment for the city's Bureau of Police.
All right. Deputy Chief Young?
Thank you. So this, prior to this, we had, we would deal with Lou Laguna, Dr. Laguna. Dr. Laguna has since, at the end of last year, he has joined with Wolin, WC Public Safety or Public Assessments for Psychological Service. As you know, I mean, we're required to give psychological testing to new applicants as well as any fitness for duty, any of the psychological issues or testing that we may need done on current employees. Currently in our budget, there is under, bear with me, under 421016, medical and psychological exams. We have budgeted $6,375 dollars for new hire testing, which that is 15. I think the number's probably a little high as far as how many we were able to get hired. I think the number's probably a little high as far as how many we were able to get hired. But we have plenty of spots if anybody's interested in becoming a police officer. We start that testing again here very soon. We also have an additional 10,000 in psychological services. If you look at the back of the, the resolution, it lists the psychological services that he would be providing. He is currently on Zoom for any questions that, that we may have. Is he there? Did he go? He's not there?
Try to get him back.
It's Dr. Wolan, Andrew Wolan. I know I'm mispronouncing his last name. Spelling is W-O-L-A-N-I-N. Dr. Laguna went in with him towards the end of last year. They consolidated services. They are out of Westchester, but he does, with Dr. Laguna being part of that, that group, he still has the office in, in Anvil. Might have lost him.
Yeah, does anybody, any of my colleagues have any questions for? Chief Young.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's just what he's.
Say that again, though.
Yeah, the contract is almost identical to the one previously approved by city council. It's just because they consolidated their practices that it had to be redone. I understand Dr. Laguna has headed down south with his wife for how long? I don't know. So, right, so. But there's very few people in the Commonwealth that's certified. There we go, to do this, so.
All right. I don't have any questions. It's pretty. No one has any questions? All right, so I'll ask for this to be added to the next legislative agenda? All right. So Mr. Truesdale, okay. Can you read into the record Resolution 11, 2024?
Resolution 11, 2024. A resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the City of Harrisburg Bureau of Police, which has exhausted its useful life for city operations.
All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Tom McGarry. I'm a captain with the Harrisburg Bureau of Police. Coming before you again to seek authorization to dispose of some city property, mainly some very outdated file machines, security cameras and security sensors. There's a total of nine file machines, four cameras and two sensors that we'd be looking to do away with. Again, when I say outdated, we're switching to digitized records. These are the big, I don't know if you're familiar with it, like in a doctor's office or, or, you know, other place that holds an exorbitant amount of paperwork. It's almost like a carousel for records where you put it in, it rotates around. There are, again, nine total. To give you an idea of the scope of the size of these things, they'd be roughly from the floor to the ceiling and arguably take up about a third of this chamber. I don't foresee us ever activating those again. Currently, they're just kind of collecting dust. If we were able to dispose of them, that would create a great amount of workspace for the, for the record staff and enhance their ability to serve the citizens here. The security cameras also outdated. They don't even work on the same format of our current camera systems as, as the same with the sensors there.
All right, so I would just ask, will there be any way that you can get any revenue from these things or you just have to destroy them?
Honestly, sir, I think maybe scrapping them. I'd have to talk to our facilities people and see, there's quite a bit of material there. So I think scrapping them might be the best bet.
That's right.
Yes, sir. I don't know anybody that's going to put these back into service.
Well, they're not, yeah, they're not repairable right now. We tried and it's either the cost to bring them back around is too great or they're just, they're just non-repairable. So, I mean, they've been sitting back there, we've been asking and then finally we just decided to make the move to try to, to present it to you, Council to.
All right, and Mr. Davis, if I may, Mr. West, I'm sorry. Excuse me again, I'm telling you it's late. Is there some property that's on, on your lot that needs to be removed? That's some old cars or something like that? And then go to this. Okay, all right, apologize. But I'll, I'll ask you guys, do you have any questions for?
No questions for me. Thank you for being here, for your report.
All right, all right, I will ask for this, also for this resolution to be added to the next agenda as well. Legislative agenda.
Thanks, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Okay, we will now move to the Public Works Committee. I will defer to our Public Works Committee Chair, Chair Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. Today in the, well, this evening in the work, in the work of the Public Works Committee, we'll be discussing Resolution 8 of 2024 and Resolution 9 of 2024. Mr. Truesdale, can you please read Resolution 8 of 2024 into the record?
Resolution 8, 2024. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg, re-establishing Hot Spot Saturdays, a community beautification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of 2024.
Thank you for that. And to join us to answer any questions if council may have any is Director West for Public Works. I will give the overview or review of Hot Spot Saturdays. It is an initiative that council has approved for two seasons now and it's done phenomenal. In 12 days in two seasons, we were able to remove 70 tons of illegal waste or trash throughout our community. This year, I'm proud to announce that we're actually expanding. And with a new partnership with Dolphin County Solid Waste and Recycle, with Ms. Kelly, the director, we are adding e-waste to the initiative this year. Still all voluntary based, still 100% covered by our entities and partners. But just a great way to provide a savings for the city and cut back on a lot of the nonsense that's happening as way of illegal dumping. I'm actually proud to say, working in that realm, in that space, we were actually able to confiscate a U-Haul that we caught actually illegal dumping uptown just a month ago or two. It's, it's unbelievable how courageous some of these illegal dumpers are because they'll come and then come right back an hour or two later. I'm like, wow, it takes, it takes a lot of courage, I'll say, to say the least. But if all the council members have a copy, I went even as far as to just describe how it works with some animation to it. But volunteers registered for the specific cleanup date they'd like to take part in. And it's as easy as just showing up, pickers, gloves, bags and more are on the location. And we provide those items. The initiative has to be all volunteer-based to be in fidelity with the standards of the Schwama. Harrisburg Public Works, they set out the 30 to 40 foot containers at each location. We get them out there early the day before and take them out right after. That will eliminate any unnecessary or after dumping. As you know, some communities, hey, it's dump time. And we can allocate days just specifically for that, but that's not what Hot Spot Saturdays is intended to do. And of course, LaSchwama has sponsored this initiative for the third consecutive year is because of their generosity and care for our city that we're able to reap such a great benefit from our partnership. And once again, you guys should have a copy of last year's sample letter. And it just indicates that they are solely going to cover the fees and tilling responsibilities as long as we stay in the parameters they set as far as executing with fidelity. So it's very important that we stay volunteer-based and get a lot of the, you know, community involved. And even if you're a senior and don't have the ability to lift, there's duties at the registration table you can assist with handing out waters or juices. So, you know, anyone could play a role. The one thing we shouldn't get in the habit of doing is saying, I cannot, right? We'll remove that and everyone could just kind of chip in in any form that they can. Of course, so the e-waste, that would consist of, make sure I get you the right information. So on the back page, the e-waste would be televisions, computers, computer peripherals, laptops, cell phones, cables, copier, computers, monitors, networking equipment, VCRs, DVD players, e-readers and tablets. It's important that we educate the residents on what those items are so we know how to dispose of them correctly. And once again, we will not handle those discarded items. There will be a e-waste, they call them the Gaylords. They're the big kind of cardboard holders that go into the trailers. Those will be loaded up. Someone from the Solid Waste will be there as well as Public Works to ensure that they, that gets taken over to the recycle after every initiative. And our Public Works team will be taking the trash and the litter and, you know, bigger items where that needs to go. So there'll be a multitude of teams this year. Dirty Dog Hauling has jumped on, Dolphin County has jumped on, CRW, which a lot of them were supposed to be here, but due to the hour, you know, unfortunately they couldn't. But I definitely look forward to a lot of their input at the end of the season to see how this goes. And I just think it's a positive thing that it's growing. It's getting great reviews and it's something everyone could play a part in. It's not mine or ours. I feel like it's the city. So, you know, we could all treat it like our baby and play a part. For more information, of course, you can contact our clerk's office or email me directly at rrodrigues@harrisburgpa.gov. And I'll go over the six dates for this year, be April 13th, May 18th, June 29th, July 20th, August 24th and September 14th. So if anyone's interested, we do have the direct links or QR codes on all the designs where you go directly to the volunteer page. You fill out your information, what date you're interested in, and it's as easy as showing up. All of the liability waivers are actually in those volunteer forms, the same that the city uses across the board. And it's really just about the beautification and education of the city. With that being said, I'll go over the first six locations. On April 13th, we will execute in Camp Curtain uptown. May 18th will be the Allison Hill location. Yeah, the Allison, Mid Allison Hill location. Then we have, June 29th will be the Midtown. July 24th will be the South Side Cloverly area of South Allison Hill. August 24th will be North Hillside. So that would be the opposite of Hur Street, going towards Calder, the infirmary over that way down the bypass. And of course, concluding September 14th in the Italian Lake Zembo Shrine location. All areas identified by Public Works just as, you know, either it's an alley in that area or somewhere in that area that's high concern. And what I didn't want to do, and I'm almost certain that council feels the same way, is leave out any portion of the city, right? I don't want to be guilty of what others are accused of in segregating or just focusing on one area. One Harrisburg, one family, one team. Those are my aspirations, you know, pie in the sky. But with that, Director West, if you have anything to add, feel free or I could open it up to council and we can go off of that.
Well, this is stated, the program. Good evening, Council. I apologize. The program has been very successful throughout the years. And started off small, but it's continued to gain strength throughout the years of intenuing to do it year after year. You know, the buy-in has to be consistency and change the mindset of those who do not want to be a part of, to let them know that we will continue to do this until you become a part of it because it takes a team effort for us to get our city together in a whole. And teamwork makes the dream work. I share it all the time within our team. There's no individual that can do anything alone. So as we continue to go into the Hot Spot Saturdays and other nonprofit organizations, continue to see what we're doing, that they, that we can collaborate with all entities and create a very large team to clean our entire city. That's the goal. That's what the vision that I see.
Absolutely. And thank you for that. And with that being said, if there are any entities or groups or just individuals that want to assist, please feel free to reach out because there is more than enough, unfortunately, waste to pick up for us all. But hopefully we'll get there one day where we're like, all right, let's paint porches now. It's pretty clean. So that's the dream, but until then, you know, the more the merrier. And if you have an initiative going on, I would love to support. I'm pretty sure Public Works would love to support. The initial day was actually Earth Day, but because of the great Harrisburg cleanup, I wanted to be, you know, cognizant of that and we moved the day to April 13th. And I would love to pitch in and help, you know, the crew over there. But with that being said, if I like to open it up to my colleagues if there's any questions or concerns or thoughts.
Yeah, I just have one that I briefly spoke to you about, just so our listeners and viewers can hear this. What do you guys do about going owing to private property when they have things of that nature?
Yep, so private property is not allowed if you're a employee of the city, but we keep it volunteer-based. So if a homeowner asks us, we have no issue doing so as volunteers, that's allowed. But Public Works or like me as councilman wouldn't be able to violate that space.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Councilwoman Ross.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. I just have one question. The dumping of the, I think it was called e-material. So if someone's in that area and they have, I don't know, a TV, a phone or anything, they can just bring it or does it have to be outside and you are picking it up?
So at every location moving forward, there'll be the Gaylords on location, which are the big cardboard bins that they go into. Someone from Public Works and the recycle facility will actually be there to coach residents. So it could be citywide. You can live uptown and drop it off out the South Side just because you need to get rid of those items. And we will make sure that they get disposed of correctly through the recycling center.
Okay, thank you. Is the same for the trash, wastement, like their trash as well? If they say, I have had this big couch forever, I need to get it out, can they bring it?
No, that was slightly different, yeah.
Okay, just asking.
That would open up a different kind of initiative.
Yes.
Like a one year, everything was like, leave it on the curb and we'll come.
Right, right, I remember that.
I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure Director West would be, I'd be open to trying something like that. But because of the guidelines LaSchwama has set, in order for them to cover it, it has to be volunteer-based, picked up that day, you know, from that immediate area disposed of and then they get rid of it.
Just wanted to make sure.
And, and the second response, Councilwoman Ross, to the question is, we, in Neighborhood Services, we have a line item for a community cleanup. And if a community decides to, say, have a block captain and they get their community together and they want to have a community cleanup, they will contact the Public Works Office and we will go out and visit the community and we will set a day and a time that we will drop our containers off for their community to clean their area of their community. And it's a line item paid for out of our budget.
Okay, thank you so much. And who would they contact for that?
They will contact the Public Works Office at the 421 number.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Madam President?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Madam Vice President.
I don't have any questions regarding this. I look forward to another successful season.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Davis?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you for being here again, Director West. Thank you for everything you do. I do remember working with you on a cleanup project uptown, I think it was McClay and Jefferson. And we, and you, your department was able to pick up all the bags that the volunteers had put all the trash in. And you also removed a vehicle, beds, frames, and then you secured the private, I don't know.
Lot area.
The lot area with metal fencing.
Yes.
So I'm excited about this initiative also. Will this information be going out to the community?
Absolutely.
Okay. How about the big dish, whatever they're called, that sit up on the buildings? You know how you order cable or something from the?
Satellite, yep.
The satellite dish, yes. Will you be able to pick those up?
What we will have, because the metal, because it's metal and metal can't go in trash, metal is collected separately. So if we will have metal during a Hot Spot Saturday, we will sit it on the side of the container and one of our employees will take a one-ton truck and we'll load it on a truck and we'll put it, take it to the metal pile at the Public Works Office.
Okay, so the resident can just reach out to you and ask you to come past their property and?
Not for this one, not enough, not. It would have to be cleaned up, that, like that day in that area. Like a resident picking it up or not involved in the cleanup, that would be a different initiative.
It's a different initiative.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Thank you. I'm tired.
No worries, no worries, no worries.
But again, they can, they can take their neighborhood and, and have a meeting with their community and create a community cleanup. And once they do that, we will come out, have a site visit again and create the community cleanup for their community.
Okay, I know how to initiate that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any further questions from my colleagues? Director West, anything to add? All right, so I highly encourage, well, I moved to put resolution. Alright, so I highly encourage, well, I move to put Resolution Eight of twenty twenty four on our next legislative um, session coming up. And uh, we'll go right into Resolution Nine of twenty twenty four. Mr. Truesdale, can you read Resolution Nine of twenty twenty four, please?
Resolution Nine, twenty twenty four, a resolution of the city, or the council of the City of Harrisburg authorizing and appointing Daniel Snow, city engineer, as the city's designee, designee to execute any forms and documents in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's electronic reimbursement agreement system.
Thank you for that. Um, so uh, Engineer Snow, pleasure to see you again. Um, would you like to give a review or overall of Resolution Nine of twenty twenty four?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So uh, as you are probably already aware, um, many of the federal grants that are awarded to the city for transportation projects are reimbursed via reimbursement agreements. Um, that is, the city is reimbursed for project costs after they're incurred. Um, so PennDOT's reimbursement agreement system is where the agreements are executed and amended electronically. Um, and we currently have three projects that'll be partially funded by federal dollars in our department. Um, that would be the Paxton Parkway Trail Project, Capital Gateway Project, and then the Hur Street Safety Improvements Project. Uh, passage of this resolution would enable me to act as the city's signatory and uh, execute these agreements, future reimbursement agreements, and agreement amendments in PennDOT's RAS system.
Awesome. Um, I just have one question. Does this put you in conflict in any area of your position currently with the city?
I don't, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, awesome. Yep. Really? Okay. Alright, well, I will open it up to my colleagues on council, starting with my far right, Councilwoman Davis.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you. I do not have any questions.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Thank you for um, toughing it out with us tonight. Uh, last on the agenda here, I don't have any questions for you. Thank you.
Awesome. Madam President?
Thank you. I don't have any questions.
Councilwoman Rawls?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for being here with us tonight. Director Snow, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
No questions.
Alright, with that being said, not hearing any, I move to put or add Resolution Nine of twenty twenty four to our next legislative session. And that will conclude the work of the Public Works Committee for the City of Harrisburg. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will now move to public comment. In the interest of time, if everyone could move a little expeditiously, we still do have a legislative session to uh, get through rather quickly. Um, so I'll begin to my right. If you could just state your name, your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. You'll have four minutes to share your comments. And Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. So is there anyone to my right that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section. Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left, okay?
Good evening, Tanya Dioroff. I'm the Chief Strategy Officer with Capital Region Water. As time went on, I was scribbling, so I will scribbling things out. So I will be very brief. I'm here on behalf of Capital Region Water tonight, just to um, provide our support on behalf of the Hot Spot Saturday Initiative. We all know that litter is unsightly. It's a matter of public health. It's a matter of public safety. It's also a matter that impacts our infrastructure and our ability to do our job. Litter makes its way into storm drains and into our pipes. It also makes its way directly into our local waterways, causing a larger environmental issue. Uh, Capital Region Water hosts a number of litter cleanups throughout the year. And we're really glad um, to leverage a lot of collaboration to do this on an even larger scale. We know we're newer to this effort. It's been in um, existence for a couple of years. And we've simultaneously been doing similar sorts of things. So um, we do look forward to lending our support and resources to the city's um, Hot Spot Saturday Initiative. Um, we will assist in the cleanups and whatever we can do in terms of promotion, advertising, volunteer recruitment. These are things we do anyway, so we're, we're glad to do it for this effort. And we are um, glad to also be providing supplies for the efforts. So we look forward to providing um, information about Capital Region Water at the events too, and how litter does impact our sewer and stormwater systems and our natural environment. So again, on behalf of Capital Region Water, we thank you, Councilman Rodriguez, for your leadership. We look forward to collaboration and more so, we look forward to the results.
Thank you. Uh, the time is nine forty-five PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned. If it's okay. Your phone. So the time is nine forty-five PM. I would like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels. Ms. Green.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. The invocation will be led by Vice President Green, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, if we could just all take a moment of silence and keep the family of those who lost their life in our community and our, our thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez.
Can we all rise for the pledge, please?
Thank you, Vice President Green and Councilman Rodriguez. For communications, we are joined by Mr. Corey Dupree. He serves as the co-founder of Layers of Black History.
And may the record reflect, so I don't get yelled at later, I'm also joined by my daughter, Mariah Dupree.
Absolutely.
Good evening, Mariah.
Uh, so uh, first and foremost, we'd like to thank you all for your time on the service that you put forth to uh, this citizens who are inside the room and those who are outside. Um, for background and context, once again, my name is Mr. Corey Dupree. I am the co-founder of the Layers of Black History Organization. Our organization is focused on highlighting diverse stories and representation in literacy. Um, by doing so, by hosting curated events throughout not just central Pennsylvania, but across the country. Um, to go ahead and give background to our story and kind of how it starts, uh, I want to say it was two thousand and twenty-one. Um, I currently live in Palmyra, um, originally from Cambridge, Massachusetts. I went to Milton Hershey for high school. Uh, Harrisburg to me, um, as you can imagine, with Palmyra's population being seventy-seven percent white, Harrisburg to me is where I feel the most at home. Um, so being able to go and do active community work and being actively engaged, uh, that's why I'm here tonight. But summer of twenty twenty-one, I had taken my two children to the park in Palmyra. Uh, and as we were riding around, my kids were eight and five. We had taken a second lap around the park at that point in time, saw some middle schoolers who had actually had the audacity to yell out, point and call us niggers. And excuse my language, but uh, I just believe in being real, raw, transparent. And I had to explain as a dad to my eight and five-year-old what that word meant, why dad was upset, and essentially, what are we gonna do about it? So I sat down, had a conversation with the kids and really got to the baseline. We know that's, that hatred, that understanding or lack thereof, it's really taught at home. Uh, so I started an initiative. I've always been one for a good party. Uh, so that happened in August. And I reached out to some of my family members and, and former peers at Milton Hershey School and decided that February, we would have a book initiative. For me, growing up, I love Harry Potter, I love Narnia, I love Goosebumps. But you could sit here and describe Ronald Weasley's curly red hair and Sloppy the Doll's brown slicked back wooden hair. But you couldn't describe the monogony skin of a black boy or girl, um, or the kinks and twists inside of her curls. It wasn't until I was in sixth grade, reading Alex Cross, Along Came a Spider, um, where I was able to go and find a character representation. Uh, so that's twelve years of my life where I was kind of lost. And I didn't want that to be the case. So fast forward, uh, up to today, we have um, donated thirty-six hundred books to schools, organizations and businesses in central Pennsylvania, as well as across the US, and even going as far as globally, uh, our initiatives. We host six large-scale events. Uh, one is the Layers of Black History Gala. It's a twenty-one-plus event, and that's what the first party, uh, and Mariah and my son Corey were the only kids at that party. And after that was done, there were a lot of parents who were like, how do we get our kids involved? Uh, so that took two, year two, uh, where we started the Little Layers of Black History Gala, uh, being intentional and making sure that our kids were involved. And Mariah was responsible for a lot of the planning process, um, and spending money. But uh, I think it's safe to say that that left an impact, because we're here for the second annual Little Layers of Black History Gala. Uh, and this now is going to be at the Keystone Forum. It is sold out with over two hundred attendees. We also host a hair care workshop, so we host a brunch of hair essentials um, in the winter. And then in the summer, we host one uh, free hair care workshop. I work with stylists. I'm on the board of Penn State Dermatology. So skincare and hair care are extremely important, going from the winter to the summer. Uh, essentially, I see a problem and I like to solve it, uh, which brings me to uh, what I like to speak to you all about today. I was blessed to finish second in the M and T Bank Multicultural um, Business Incubator Competition. Uh, the business that I pitched is a conference series for men who are raising black boys. Uh, I was adopted by my grandmother when I was four. However, I was raised by many men. Uh, my biological father taught me the way of the streets. My uncle, who was a gay black man, taught me the importance and need and stress of education. My big brother from the Big Brother Big Sister Program, who took me in when I was seven years old. I don't know why, but he was twenty-four, fresh out of Vanderbilt, and a white man who had taught me so much in life, whether it's going to Martha's Vineyard in the summer, um, or it's filling out SAT prep packets. And at Milton Hershey, I had a White House father who hadn't seen a black person until he was nineteen years old, when he joined the Marines. However, I still look at all those men and all those individuals, coaches, mentors, mentees, um, in high regard. So this conference will be taking place at Harrisburg University on Saturday, May eighteenth. It'll be a day-long conference, uh, and it's going to include local, um, so Jordan Hill, Jawan Chisholm. Uh, we know how important or how high we hold our athletes, uh, but they're great father figures. Uh, while Jordan's the dad of girls, you can argue, can argue that he's the dad of many boys and many young men, um, being in that position that he is at Trinity. And also poets coming up from DC. We have partnered with Black Men Heal, which is a mental health uh, nonprofit. They provide free mental health therapy services to black men in thirteen cities, and they're based out of Philadelphia. Uh, so with May being Mental Health Awareness Month globally, we think it's extremely important to be intentional about what walls we're looking to go ahead and break down and how we're looking to go ahead and build our black and brown boys up. So I wanted to keep it short.
Thank you very much for being here. I apologize for the late hour. Um, this is the last week of our sort of stacked meeting schedule, just to get us back on schedule. Um, so thank you for being here. Thank you, Mariah, for being here as well.
Thank you for having us.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Have a good evening. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Rodriguez has a proclamation um, that he would like to share.
Yes, um, thank you, Madam President. Um, so on behalf of the Harrisburg City Council and the City of Harrisburg, the City Council has a proclamation for uh, the Layers um, Book Event, but also um, the team. Um, numerous names are named, and I'll go ahead and proceed and read. So whereas the Layers of Black History Event Series was founded in February twenty twenty-one by Corey Dupree, Joanna Tanzamore? Alright. And Rashawn Givens has a dynamic initiative dedicated to mobilizing communities and fostering social, emotional, and professional development for youth. And whereas the missions of the Layers of Black History Event Series is rooted in the belief that access to diverse literature and representation in education is crucial for empowering individuals and communities. And whereas the Layers of Black History Event Series has impacted numerous schools, education organizations, community organizations, and businesses making significant contributions to the community by donating books, non-perishable food items, and supporting local businesses. Whereas Layers of Black History is committed to curating events throughout the year that highlight and prioritize educational platforms and representation in literacy, creating spaces for meaningful dialogue, cele- celebrating diverse narratives, and cultivating a deeper understanding of representation across multiple sectors. And whereas through their initiatives, the Layers of Black History aims to address the disparity in access to diverse literature and educational resources, particularly for marginalized communities, and has distributed over thirty-two hundred books since February of twenty twenty-one, with an additional thirty-four hundred books currently awaiting distribution. And whereas the Little Layers of Black History Gala, one of their signature events, exemplifies their commitment to community engagement and empowerment, serving as the largest book drive and fundraising effort that brings together individuals, businesses and organizations to support their mission. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Ralph Rodriguez of Harrisburg City Council, do hereby express our deep appreciation to Corey Dupree for their outstanding contributions to the Harrisburg community through the Layers of Black History Event Series. Thank you, guys.
Yes, I'd like to pause just for a quick picture, so if you guys could just please come up here quickly and we can get a photo and then continue through our meeting agenda. Meeting agenda. Next, we have courtesy of the floor. Um, as I mentioned, you have four minutes to share your comments. Please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. I'll begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section. Seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left. Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward with the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Next, we have reports of committees. You will hear the following reports. A report from Chair Green on the work session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. A report from Chair Davis on the public hearing and work session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. A report from Chair Jones on the work session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And a report from Chair Rodriguez on the work session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. Chair Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, during the work session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed two pieces of legislation. The first was Resolution Twelve of twenty twenty-four, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional service agreement with Meyer Dusu PC for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg. Uh, this is for the assistance with the twenty twenty-two audit preparations and will assist the city in getting on track with their audits. Um, there is a not-to-exceed cost of nineteen thousand dollars. We also discussed Resolution Thirteen of twenty twenty-four, a resolution approving the first proposed twenty-two. a resolution approving the first proposed twenty-twenty-four budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of certain twenty-twenty-three budget year incumbent commitments, and to reaffirm certain twenty-twenty-three capital project appropriations. We received a presentation from the city's Budget and Finance Departments, going over the five schedules detailed, excuse me, detailing the proposed budget reallocations. The first was a request to move funds within the state liquid fund to cover the costs of the twenty-twenty-four paving needs. The next was, went on to include the previous year encumbrances to move costs budgeted for twenty-twenty-three but not invoiced or spent into the twenty-twenty-four budget to cover the costs. The next schedule covered the funds for the FNB Field upgrades, Public Works Storage Dome, excuse me, and the Public Works Storage Dome. And the next, we discussed a schedule involving providing funding to HRA to help cover their twenty-twenty-four operating expenses. And the last schedule we discussed was providing funds to cover the utility expenses for the fire department to operate in twenty twenty-four. I would ask my colleagues to support both Resolutions Twelve and Resolution Thirteen of twenty twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Davis.
Thank you, President Bowers. The work session of February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, public hearing. Bill number one dash two thousand and twenty-four. An ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designation of two oh eight Hummel Street from the residential median density RM zone to the commercial neighborhood CN zone pursuant to Chapter seven dash three oh three of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg. Mr. Jeffrey Knight was present from the administration and shared a brief preview about why this hearing is taking place. He shared the applicants and their process of applying for commercial zoning, being denied, and the appeal process, and the need to come before council. Mr. Neil Grover of our law bureau introduced all the applicants in the hearing, including the applicant's applicant's attorney, excuse me, Andrew Georgian. The applicant is the Brethren Housing. Council members, excuse me. Council members asked a few questions pertaining to the commercial offices, the surrounding community, and the current residential properties. The Brethren of the Housing has been serving the community for over thirty years, providing housing to single mothers, homeless families. And I would like this bill, I would like my colleagues to support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Jones.
Yes, on two twenty-seven, twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-four, the Public Safety Committee work session was held. And Resolutions ten of twenty twenty, Resolution ten dash twenty twenty-four, which read, I mean, and Resolution eleven of twenty twenty-four, where it reads, Resolution ten of ten twenty, Resolution ten of twenty twenty-four reads, was a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional service agreement with the WCA Public Safety Assessment for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessment for the city borough police. Resolution eleven of twenty twenty-four read as a resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the city of Harrisburg and the Borough Police, which has exhausted its useful life for city's operations. Present at those, this hearing was for the Borough Police was Deputy Chief Young. Also Captain Wieland, Wieland. From the Community Service Division was Sharnan Hudson and Angelo Craig. And Captain Winder from the Bureau of Fire was Chief Interly. And the Bureau of Colds, Anne Montgomery. The Health Office, Nelva Wright. Questions that were asked during that session was, they were asked about the shot spotter, the GVI, GIVP, and the LPR. There were also questions asked about the CSAs and its effectiveness and interactions dealing with the National Night Out. Also was asked about the mentoring for the CSAs in the schools. For fire, in the fire department, they were just acknowledged by council for the great work that they are doing. And was asked about any new equipment, and also about the fire shortage rate decrease. There was questions for Colds on just the two vacancies, and there were no other questions. And that will, oh, I will also ask my colleagues to support Resolution ten, twenty twenty-four, and eleven, twenty twenty-four. And that ends my report.
Thank you. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. We do have one ordinance for amendment. That's Bill one of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill one, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designation of two oh eight Hummel Street from the residential medium density zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to Chapter seven, three oh three, of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. We have one ordinance for final passage, that's Bill one of two thousand and twenty-four. Can you please read it into the record one more time?
Bill one, twenty twenty-four. An ordinance amending the city of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designation of two oh eight Hummel Street from the residential medium density zone to the commercial neighborhood zone pursuant to Chapter seven, three oh three, of the codified ordinances of the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill one of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill one, twenty twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions. We have Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-four, Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-four, Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-four, Resolution eleven of two thousand and twenty-four, Resolution twelve of two thousand and twenty-four, and Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read these resolutions into the record?
Resolution eight, twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the City Council of the city of Harrisburg reestablishing Hot Spot Saturdays, a community unification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eight of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing, hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution eight, twenty twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution nine, twenty twenty-four. A resolution of the City, of the Council of the city of Harrisburg authorizing and appointing Daniel Snow, city engineer, as the city's designee to execute any forms and documents in the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's electronic reimbursement agreement system.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution nine of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution nine, twenty twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution ten, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with WCA Public Safety Assessments for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessment for the city's Bureau of Police.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution ten of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution ten, twenty twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution twelve of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it? Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped eleven. Resolution eleven of two thousand and twenty-four. Can you please read it into the record?
Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving the disposal of certain personal property owned by the city of Harrisburg Bureau of Police, which has exhausted its useful life for city operations.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eleven of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution eleven, twenty twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution twelve of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution twelve, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to enter into a professional services agreement with Meyer Dusel PC for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the city of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution twelve of two thousand and twenty-four? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution twelve, twenty twenty-four passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Our final resolution for consideration is Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr., yes.
Just a technical issue with this, it's just that this is an amended version, so it has to be voted on as amended.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. We have Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four as amended. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-four. A resolution approving the first proposed twenty-twenty-four budget reallocation in order to reclassify certain allocations to authorize the roll forward of certain twenty-twenty-three budget year incumbent commitments, and to reaffirm certain twenty-twenty-three capital project appropriations.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution thirteen of two thousand and twenty-four as amended? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rolls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-four as amended, passes by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution fourteen of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Alexander Building Construction Company to serve as construction manager for certain city island improvements and facility upgrades to the city-owned stadium presently known as FNB Field.
Thank you. Excuse me, Resolution fourteen of two thousand and twenty-four will move to the Parks and, Parks Recreation and Richment Committee?
It is totally your discretion. This, this covers a lot of different things.
It's facilities, so I was torn between Public Works and Parks and Rec.
Well, Dave Baker is the one working with the project manager, so it is, that's, that's where that is, not in Parks and Rec. So he is the one doing it.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. I apologize, I will go with my first mind, Public Works. Next, we have Resolution fifteen of two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution fifteen, twenty twenty-four. A resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Ewing Cole to serve as architect for certain city island improvements and facility upgrades to the city-owned stadium presently known as FNB Field.
Thank you.
Madam President, just for clarification, I know it's late. Dave Baker is not in Public Works, he is in...
Facilities separately.
Parks and Rec is in Public Works, but Facilities is now separate from Public Works.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. So then...
These are his contracts.
I understand, but it would then go to? Facilities.
Wherever that fits now.
And then Resolution fifteen goes to?
It's the same, so it will also move to Facilities, which? Yes. We will.
But you do.
Yes. The organizational chart is still not committed to memory, so I do apologize. Is there any old business, council members? Seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Madam President, the lights are out upstairs.
I understand, I'm trying to move.
And so I would advise no one to take anything back up, just lock it down here for the night.
Thank you. The time is ten sixteen PM, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you. I apologize again for the lengthy meeting.